So good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I was thinking, you can tell we're all a wild and crazy bunch because we've been a mardi gras at a city council meeting.
Woo!
Here we go. I call to order this public hearing on ordinance 543 and 544. Ms. Merrick, would you call the vote, please? Council President Susan Satter. Present. Councilperson Joseph Day.
Present.
Councilperson Nuneen Dubaka.
Here.
Councilperson Andrew Vell.
Here.
Councilperson Ryan Madderwell.
Here.
Also in attendance, Mayor Valerie Leary, City Treasurer Janet Carlin, City Building Official Jeff Bruckstrom, City Solicitor Max Walton. Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so we're ready to hear from any of you who wish to speak on these ordinances. Do we... You want to take them in order or just back and forth between the two? Or just do one on one another? Okay. Let's just, as you get to the podium, whichever ordinance you want to speak to, as usual, state your name and your address, and there's a sign-in sheet on the podium. Please throw that out as well. You have three minutes. There's a timer here, but you'll be able to see that gives you warning to tell where your, how your time's going. So, who's first?
All right. My name is Matt Alexander. I'm from Juniper Street. Thanks to each of you for your work on behalf of our town, both on this party and all things each of you. Regarding ordinance 543, I have a few questions I think the council will address in this discussion tonight, or at least consider before voting. Before addressing the substance, I would note that the legalese language included in it and other recent ordinances sometimes seems like an exercise in C Y A, recovery of cases. Council's democratic power comes from the votes that put you there, not the specific language you use. The desire to preempt legal challenges to laws and ordinances is understandable, but language has meaning, and phrases like "the express finding votes changes out of line below enhance the health, safety, and welfare of the city" should not be used as talismans. My views should be justified. That said, here are my questions. First, what prompted and what justifies this finding regarding our health, safety, and welfare? The ordinance flatly states, quote, "The city council finds that marijuana cultivation facilities and retail stores are not appropriate resources for any properties." I just want to know why? Why does retail use inappropriate for this particular intoxicant? Second, if marijuana is somehow just not an appropriate industry to welcome into Newcastle, why make an exception to testing and manufacturing? Are there current businesses for which this represents a carve-out? Is it fair for investors to be able to cash in on the growing pot industry while local users of marijuana products can never have a local store to go to? Third, the ordinance says, quote, "No marijuana-related business shall be permitted." What is the threshold for considering a product or business to be, quote, "marijuana-related", with CBD products, which can contain small amounts of THC be effective? Will this affect stores in town currently selling pipes and other paraphernalia? Fourth, this isn't a question so much, but if the argument for this ordinance is one of town character, I just find it relevant that hemp was almost certainly grown in colonial Newcastle and may likely have been cultivated here until the early 1900s. Fifth, if the rationale for this ordinance is based purely on a public safety argument, what statistics or other info contributed to the key findings? Sixth, and lastly, if state law changes in the future to allow citizens to grow cannabis plants as they can in some other legalization states, will this ordinance bar private citizens from growing for personal use? To be clear, I'm not for or against this ordinance, but I do find overtly officious pronouncements suspect, and just would like some justification. I hope your discussion will be illuminating in that regard. Thank you all.
Anyone else on either ordinance?
I am Pat Malingham. Do, 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 just a state. Pardon me. Being a doctor and a retired doctor after also being involved in taking care of drug addiction for the last six years after my retirement, I feel, my opinion about this situation about marijuana is that most of the drug addicts I have seen over the last six years started with this particular substance. So, and eventually they ended up with all the possible narcotics with this most dangerous fentanyl nowadays. So, as a physician, all I can say is it could be used internally ill people with cancer with a lot of pain, and if it makes them feel better, that is the only way, I think I feel it should be done. But several states have already authorized it. I thought of just giving my opinion, that's all. I think I am totally not supportive of getting marijuana authorized in this state. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
My name is Jeff Nguyen. I live on Delaware Street. And the first thing I'd like to do is ask the question, how was it decided that cannabis, a cannabis-related business was not something that belonged in, as my wife and I call it, here in the village? What went into that decision? What is it about a cannabis-related business that is, that doesn't fit in my favorite village where I live?
Well, that's the purpose of this ordinance. It's asserted that it isn't appropriate. We either spoke that it is or it is not. That's the purpose of this discussion tonight.
Well, I'm just wondering, has anybody had any discussions on the council? Or anybody else about?
We are not permitted to discuss it among ourselves outside of public meetings. That's why we're here tonight.
Okay. This is the first meeting I've come to, so I don't know all the protocols. But as a lifelong user of cannabis and a person who's been to cannabis dispensaries in three different states over the last 10 years, I've never seen a problem at any of the locations I ever went to. The businesses were always clean, well-regulated, with security at some of them. There were a few of them where you have to get wanded even to go in the building. They've all been in neighborhoods that look just like any other neighborhood. They're not dirty. There are already ordinances that keep people from hanging around outside of places, just like there are at liquor stores or anywhere else in any village. And nowadays, when cannabis is legal in about half the country now, including the state where I was born, California, and now the state where I've chosen to live for the last three decades, I would just like to speak out and say that there's no reason for anybody to be afraid of having a business like this. It's a way, businesses like this pay taxes, which helps the states. In California, they route some of the money, I believe, to education, and there are a few other places where it goes to, and arrangements could be made for things like that, too. So, I just ask people to consider that. It's not an evil thing. Thank you.
Good evening, council, fellow residents from our town of historic Newcastle. I did make an error, and I want to clarify it, and thank you, council, for correcting me on it. I had it pass backwards. I urge you to vote yes for ordinance 543. If for nothing else, despite people saying it's good, it's not harmful, it does cast a shadow on the image that a tourist director, historical society, and everybody is trying to portray our city as. CBD oil is a derivative, might be legal, but again, should not be in the center of our city, should not be advertised as being in our city, and it can certainly be anywhere outside of our historic city of Newcastle. I can tell you for a fact that at least 15 to 20 people that I've spoken with or have seen the ordinance have asked about, why isn't, you know, CBD oils included in it? It sure should be, and you, as council people, can add amendments to the acceptance of any ordinance. And I think it's very important for the image and for the character of our city, especially when you have people coming from other areas, buses, we have plenty of events, and the shit, you know, count more nickel coming in. I just think it's out of character for our city, and again, I urge you and ask you to amend the ordinance 543 and add CBD oil to be not sold in an existing business or any future businesses. You have the power to do it, and I urge you to do it. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll be the only person to not talk about the marijuana ordinance. Except I will make this remark. I find it kind of curious that we're talking about the banning marijuana. I just noticed we have a tattoo parlor opened up in town. So, you know, I fail to see where that, you know, helps our image, but marijuana hurts. I don't really have an opinion on one or the other. I just found it curious with this ordinance about the Gateway Project parking as regards apartments, which, as you know, all is my big bugaboo that you've, you know, it seems like we're not allowed to discuss it, but I guess, you know, we're going to vote on passing an ordinance to make adjustments to the parking spaces in the apartments and the Gateway Project that I guess that we're not allowed to talk about, that we still don't know how many they're going to be and how much potential damage that's going to do to the city. Then I noticed we have an ordinance coming up for discussion later on also about the Gateway Project where you're talking about expanding, you know, the area, you know, expanding the gateway. So, does that mean even more apartments? I'm not going to let go of this apartment thing, folks, so, you know. Anyway, I just found it curious that, you know, something that we've had issues with before, with you saying you're not allowed to discuss it, but we're perfectly okay passing ordinances, making adjustments in parking spaces for these theoretical apartments that we're not allowed to discuss. That's all I've got to say.
I'll just clarify, the resolution on the agenda tonight is not about the downtown gateway zone, it's about the downtown development district, which is a whole different issue that is not effects only. So, we'll get to that when it comes up on the agenda. And then, who else?
Good evening. My name is David Powell. I used to have a home in 725 Palmer Street. It's been...
Sir, excuse me, is this about one of these two ordinances?
Apparently, I've missed this completely here.
Okay.
I just came off the calendar, so I'm supposed to start something.
All right. There'll be public comments for the regular meeting later, but this is strictly on these two ordinances.
My humble apologies.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Mr. or Dr. Padre-Lin, you've spoken once, so let's make sure there's no one else. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dave Casey. I live at East Third Street. I am the owner of Wheelie's Farm Stand Cafe. We opened in 2017. Best waffles in the state. And we just opened Wheelie's Pharmacy at the end of 2023. So, we sell CBD and some snacks, some soaps and some lotions and cold drinks to people who are walking through town. So, I just wanted to say a couple things, and before I do, I just wanted to clarify that CBD, when you mentioned marijuana specifically, that CBD is not, is not what you're referring to. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then that would change my posture a little bit. But I just want you to know, and don't take my word for any of this, please give this a Google or come talk to me later, but everybody in this room has an endocannabinoid system in your body. It predates humanity. What this says is that humans and pre-humans have been using hemp and cannabis for longer than human beings have been on this planet. So, if you don't have THC, CBD, and some of these terpenes in your system, it's kind of like driving a car without oil in it. So, you are cannabinoid deficient. So, I look into that, and it's not lost on me that we're in the senior center. Seniors are some of the people that need this the most. You have chronic inflammation, probably all of you, back pain, fibromyalgia, maybe something worse like Alzheimer's. All this can be aided with an herb. So, it's also not lost on me that we're in the heart of the chemical age here, probably a lot of people that work for DuPont. You might have got something in the mail a couple of years ago that said, "Our soil is rich in PFAs, cancer-causing agents from the damage done from the corporations that have ruled this state." So, there are things available to you that can help, other than pharmacological products. You can get help from plants, and you don't need to get high. CBD does not get you high. It's not psychoactive, but it can help with anxiety, depression, chronic pain, and debilitating diseases. And nobody should live in pain or with chronic anxiety, or if you can leave any of that, you really should consider it. So, I just, I have a hard time dealing with ignorance in the age of information. Please give that a Google. Endocannabinoid system. Thanks.
Anyone else? Last call, because it's after seven o'clock, so if no one else has a comment on these ordinances, I'll point where I see them.
Thank you. My name is Carter Hill. But first and foremost, Madam President, I want to make sure I heard correctly that the council is not allowed to discuss ordinances outside of a hearing.
Not among ourselves.
Okay.
No more than two of us, because then it's a quorum and it becomes an illegal meeting.
Gotcha. So, my first recommendation regarding the marijuana zoning ordinance is to maybe not focus on going after, you know, sending cops after peaceful people to throw them in a cage, and maybe focus on simply how the town can conduct business. It's, that alone seems to be a glaring issue with bringing ordinance in front of the people. If the council can't even talk about them before they come to the people, who's deciding what language is in them? I mean, you can spend hours going through amendments based on, you know, one or two people's language. I've heard people say that allowing marijuana in the city would cast a shadow on the city, the historical society. Somebody else greatly pointed out, right? Hemp marijuana is no stranger to these parts, right? If you want to talk about historical society, maybe have some exhibits about the founders around here who actually grew it. And to the point of zoning in general, that the council, zoning in general, is government having an arrogance about them, that they should decide best how others should use their own property. So, I ask you to vote no on the marijuana zoning ordinance.
All right. Last call again for comments on these two ordinances. As I said, there will be another comment period on other issues, of course, at the regular meeting. Any further... All right. Dr. Padre-Lin has something else to add?
Yes. Thanks for allowing me to talk, but maybe I can have my head back. What I am trying to say is, as an older physician in practice, including the drug addiction program over the last six years, three years in Delaware and three years in the state of Indiana, I think the, every person is a person, and every person is given a conscience by the Lord Almighty, and they make their own decisions depending on how their values in life is all about. So, all I am trying to say is, being involved in the care of drug addiction, I feel, as I stated earlier, it started mostly with marijuana and then went deeper and bad heroin and cocaine and now fentanyl. I think the federal government spent more than $100 billion in the care of all these people with addiction. The incidence of homicide is more in the people who use this type of drug. With that said, all I am saying is, as an older physician and with values of being what the Lord gave me, like honesty, respect, responsibility, trust, caring and sharing, all I am saying is, it is good, I have grandchildren, six of them, I hope they don't get into it, and all I am saying is, I am anti-drug man. Thank you, old man, very old man. Thank you.
I would just like to refute a couple of things that the good doctors say. I respect the doctor and his opinion, but studies have shown over the last 40 years, time and time again, that cannabis use has nothing to do with people that use harder drugs later on. Everybody that became a heroin addict probably ate carrots a lot when they were kids and drank milk. That doesn't mean they don't lead to anything else. Things are not connected just because people say they are. So, please consider that. Also, one more thing, because the doctor spoke as kind of a medical opinion, about four years ago, I was diagnosed with a bad disc, and it caused me great pain. For four years, three years, I went three times a year and had a cortisone shot and had to take gabapentin. The gabapentin was making me very, very dizzy. My doctor asked me if I had ever considered medical marijuana, gummies specifically because they work better on the body. I wound up getting off the gabapentin, which made me very dizzy and also wasn't good for your liver and your body in general, and went strictly to cannabis, and I have not had that pain in a year and a half. So, that's my testimony.
If we're taking 30 more seconds, just 30 more seconds. With respect, Doctor, I think one of the best things about living in this country and this historical city is that we can respect other people's choices. There's plenty of places to drink yourself into a stupor in this town. If you want to do that, you can. I used to work at Jessup's, so I've gotten lots of you drunk. That's just the reality of this. So, we can make choices, and we can be adults, right? And I think it's also fair to say that marijuana and hemp is not toxic. Alcohol is a neurotoxin. It is bad for your liver, it's bad for your kidneys, it's bad for your body. We still believe in free choice, and prohibition was already tried, by the way, and it was abject failure. That's what gave birth to the mafia, the mafia. You make something illegal that you can't wish it away. This is very footloose. You guys know that, right? To say, right after the state in which the Democratic majority, I'm sure the majority of you voted for, this is the will of the people, and the first thing that we do is to say, you know what? Nope, let's put the brakes on that. I just think that that's kind of going against nature, and I would also press you to find any evidence that marijuana is the gateway drug that you're saying, because I went through the DARE program, I know the propaganda has been deep for 70 years or so, but the facts just aren't there. Cigarettes and alcohol is closely related to cocaine use, which might find your way into opiate use. But find me a heroin addict that's also looking for weed. Find me an alcoholic who wants to get high at the end. That's not, these aren't the same. These are not the same people. So, again, this is just, this is an herb versus things that are toxic and bad for you. And also, I heard people mention the tattoo shop and what is maybe what we prefer in decorum around town. It's like, I don't really love the neon sign at the very opposite end of Third Street, my own street. I tolerate that. I'm not going to write a note or come up with an ordinance to say no neon signs in town. It's not my favorite. You know what? I'm insulted by Allstate Insurance in town. I think that that's kind of like, we can do better than that. If we're talking about what businesses we like, do we need major corporations coming into town? We might as well have McDonald's, little, you know, old new drive-thru, if we want to talk about what we really like that way. But it's really not about that. We need to encourage businesses to come into town. Please open up. We have a couple of ones that look like they're shuttered as soon as you're coming into town. Bring them in, and it's good for you. So, thanks.
All right. Finished now? Is this about the ordinance?
I don't know what the ordinance is, but...
It's about whether we should allow the sale of marijuana in Newcastle, once it becomes legal by the state, which doesn't take effect until 2026.
Well, I could speak on that. I was chronically affected by it. I smoked it ninth grade, and it was a gateway drug. Basically, for seven years after that, I was pretty much berserk. By the time I was 21 years old, I was standing here dead. Monterasity drugs, it's very, very bad idea to have this city. Facts are, makes you stupid, it makes you lazy, affects your mind, it's all kind of, all kind of sad, I have to personally attest to that, and that's research. Bad idea. Forgive me, I called a nap in here, I'm here for something.
Okay.
Very bad.
All right. Finished? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Two seconds. All in papers?
Aye.
Public hearing is adjourned. Okay. We'll move on to the regular council meeting, and we'll begin that with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the record, we have a roll call again, please. City Council President Susan Satter. Here. Councilperson Joseph Day.
Here.
Councilperson Nuneen Dubaka.
Here.
Councilperson Andrew Vell.
Here.
Councilperson Ryan Madderwell.
Here.
Also in attendance is Mayor Valerie Leary, City Treasurer Janet Carlin, City Building Official Jeff Bruckstrom. Okay, we're going to change the order of the agenda a bit and we're going to start with the honorary resolution, which is listed as, um, being just before public comments, but we're going to do that first. So, Mr. Day?
Thank you.
Can I have, uh, retiring fire marshal Grover P. Ingle come up in front and his wife stand?
I'd like to read the resolution. Resolution number twenty-four dash six, a resolution to honor retiring fire marshal Grover P. Ingle. Whereas Grover P. Ingle joined the Goodwill Fire Company in nineteen seventy-two and a few years after becoming a member, he was elected to the position of first fire lieutenant, thus beginning the start of his fire line journey where he rose through the ranks to become fire chief in nineteen eighty-two. Whereas Chief Ingle served as fire chief of the Goodwill Fire Company for twelve years and in nineteen ninety-four was bestowed fire chief emeritus. Whereas Chief Ingle was hired by the Delaware Office of the State Fire Marshal in nineteen ninety and was appointed the state fire marshal on June first, two thousand and seven. Whereas Fire Marshal Ingle retired from the office of the state fire marshal in twenty twenty-three after thirty-three years of dedicated service. Whereas Grover P. Ingle has been a City of Newcastle resident for over sixty years and received a fifty years of service award from Goodwill Fire Company and the Delaware Volunteer Fire Kids Association in twenty twenty-two. Whereas Grover P. Ingle served as president of the Newcastle County Fire Chiefs Association, president of the Delaware State Fire Chiefs Association, and is Delaware State Fire School instructor and holds numerous other professional memberships. Whereas Grover P. Ingle remains an intricate part of the Goodwill Fire Company, serving on its board of directors. And whereas the city and the Goodwill Fire Company jointly recognize and acknowledge that Grover P. Ingle has gone above and beyond his professional duties to serve the residents of the City of Newcastle by providing exemplary service and selfless leadership to the city and the company for the benefit of all the city residents and visitors. Now therefore, being resolved, the City of Newcastle jointly with Goodwill Fire Company hereby adopts this honorary resolution in recognition of Grover P. Ingle's longstanding, substantial, and generous service to the city, the company, and all the citizens of Delaware. Thank you, Fire Marshal Grover P. Ingle, past this thirteenth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Madam President, could we make it official with a vote, please?
Certainly. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
And we could, if we just could have the members and friends come up for a quick picture, um...
Okay, next is a, another modification to the sequence. Um, we have here from superintendent of Colonial School District, Dr. Jeffrey Mensah. He asked to speak with us this evening to present information about the coming referendum. His presence does not indicate that council is taking a position on the referendum. He will not be taking questions or comments from the public because the school districts already had multiple Q and A sessions, including one tonight, I believe. And, so, Dr. Mensah, thank you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come speak. As you all probably know, the Colonial School District is seeking a referendum from the community on February twenty-ninth. We have had several, uh, public hearings, which, I could probably, we just had them this evening where we had public come out and ask questions. Thought I would share with this group, like, what the specific items are that are on the table for the community and how I believe that it definitely benefits the City of Newcastle and its residents. There are two questions specifically that we're seeking the public to respond to. There's an operating request and a capital request. The capital request is to approve our facilities. And there are a hundred and twenty-two million dollars worth of projects in that request. The state has agreed to pay sixty percent of that because they recognize that what we have put forward merits upgrading and upkeep. It's, every school is getting something from that, whether it's at the elementary school, new playgrounds, safety enhancements included into their building, sidewalks, driveways. Car rider lines are a big one in our elementary schools. If you obviously live in the City of Newcastle and you drive by Newcastle or Cary Downey or Castle Hills, the car rider lines tend to be a little bit in the web. That's something that those schools were built almost sixty years ago. That was before car rider lines really even existed and roads were not built for that. In order for us to address that, we believe that our parking lots and our driveways need some attention in order to mitigate the impact that it has both on our staff and our students and families, but as well as on the community. Our playgrounds, some of our schools, our elementary schools, they are their original playgrounds. Pleasantville, Wilmington Manor, if you were to go by and look at them, you would see slides and swings that looked like they've been there a while. Our students deserve better. Newcastle specifically, or William Penn, whichever one you sit in, because I know that that's a touchy subject. It's the old William Penn High School, the old Newcastle Middle School, the now Newcastle Elementary School. That is getting a significant portion of the capital ask, uh, to address inside the building quality, air quality, like, quality of life issues. The building is old, it's in the nineteen twenties. It's been renovated and upgraded, but in different phases with different technologies and different systems that don't actually work well together. It's time for us to give some attention to that, that will make it a better environment for our students and staff. The other big portion of the capital ask is to, going towards our middle schools and our high school athletic facilities. The middle schools' sports facilities are really just grass fields that have a backstop. That's unacceptable. The track at George Reed, if you've ever been there, is, it's not really safe to call it a track. It's an oblong circle of dirt path around a spot of green. There used to be a track there. There used to be a track at McCullough, a track at Gunny Bedford. Those facilities need to be brought up to a higher quality so our families feel pride in what they, their children are participating in and our athletes feel pride and are safe in participating in those environments. Perhaps the biggest capital part that's getting the most attention is William Penn. Their playground, so to speak, it is the largest high school in the state of Delaware. It has a large campus. Its exterior facility, its athletic facilities are getting a significant upgrade if this were to pass. Including a state, a multi, a stadium with a multipurpose field inside the stadium with a track. Three turf practice fields, upgrades to the existing baseball and softball fields. Tennis courts that can function moved into the existing football stadium. A new stadium would be proposed to be out where the field hockey field is now. Also, there, there is a major roof project at William Penn for ten million dollars in this ask. Again, the capital ask is a hundred and twenty-two million dollars worth of projects. The state is footing the bill for sixty percent. We're asking the taxpayers for forty percent. All in all, a very good deal that's on the table for us to help improve the quality and safety and security in our facilities. The operating ask is, we are asking the taxpayers to continue to fund us at the level we're at so that we can continue to do what we're doing. There is no magical ad, there's no super special program we want to do. We just want to keep doing what we're doing. For those of you who've been around for a while, um, in twenty thirteen, we went out for a referendum and it failed the first time in February. We had to go back in June. It passed. Twenty seventeen, we were back in the same situation. We had to go out to a referendum in February. There was a capital and an operating in that referendum. The capital was all buildings getting secure vestibules in their, in their facilities. We have secure entrances, right? We have doorbells and buzzers and cameras. But these were secure vestibules that were bulletproof, contained people when they came in and didn't let them into the building. That was on that ask as well as an operating. They both failed. In June, we went back out. We dropped the capital. We knew that that was not going to pass. People didn't want to use their money for that. We ended up getting the operating passed in June of twenty seventeen. We heard the community loud and clear during that campaign. I was part of that. And the message was very simple. Don't come to us when you only want money. Pretty straightforward. They were direct. They were not happy, they were not, they were direct. But as soon as that referendum passed, we made a commitment that we were going to be about listening to our constituents, listening to our students and our staff. The power of we evolved and emerged out of that timeframe to where I believe right now the Colonial School District is meeting the needs of its students, is meeting the needs of its community the best of its ability. We are going to make mistakes. We are going to have decisions if people aren't going to like, fully recognize that. But our best interest is the students and the staff of our, of our schools. We are asking in this operating request to just fund us, to allow us to continue to do that. Costs have increased all across the board. We need, we need to fill that deficit that we're currently in. If the operating referendum is unsuccessful, we will be needing to make up a six million dollar deficit in our budget next school year. In twenty seventeen, that deficit was two point five million. For that deficit, we cut a hundred and sixty-five staff. That was not just cut people losing jobs, but attrition, we, we closed vacancies. This position, this is not going to be the same. This is a bigger deficit. This is going to require much more struggle and challenge for us to make sure that we're putting our students first. We're asking the community to support both. We've taken a very, we've taken a very conscious, this, made a conscious decision to be as transparent as possible because in the past, people were accusing us of not talking about these things. There's a billboard right down the street, paid front and center, tells you it's coming. There's a huge billboard on Route Forty, same thing. It's on our website. It's on the digital sign in front of William Penn. Every principal is talking about it every time they interact with the public. All of our schools have all collaterals in them that explain exactly what is happening. Anybody is free to grab them. And I'm going to leave a stack here with you all to do it as you see fit. There's one that has the operating in the capital request on it. There's one where to vote. Make sure that that's the first thing that's key. Go out and vote. George Reed, Cary Downey, William Penn, and then the William Penn Athletics in Castle Hills. My printer left off Newcastle. I'll make sure that it gets here. We believe that this is the right time for Colonial School District. Our facilities need it. Our students deserve it. I'll also leave with you just a reminder. I'll take any questions from council members, uh, if they have regarding the specifics or anything related to any part of this, and I'll do the best I can to respond.
Thank you for coming, Dr. Mensah. We, we do appreciate it. Uh, is there somewhere where a citizen could go online and see what the actual cost will be of their parcel?
On our website, there's a calculator. You go to the Colonial School District website, it says referendum twenty twenty-four is tab. And there's a menu of options. You can go to the calculator and you can see how to find your tax parcel because it's your assessed value, not your, not your market value, it's your assessed value. You could type, type in your assessed value and then you can see, the operating request is total forty cents. It's twenty-five, ten, and five. It's going to be steeped in over three years. And so you can see how it will increase for those three years and then on the third year, that's what it'll be for, for those...
Three consecutive years?
It's three consecutive years. That's correct. Now, the operating, you have to like, that's different because it's a bond and it's over twenty-five years, so it goes up and down. I believe at its peak, it'll be a seventeen cent at the highest point and then it'll begin to decline after that as we pay back the bond. And I think that the, on the, on the calculator website, we have like a sample, like year one, I think, we have what the buck, what the capital will be, year two, year three. We don't go out twenty-five years because you wouldn't be able to fit it on the page. But it is on the, on the notice of election that's posted in the newspaper. You can see the full payment cycle and the increase, uh, that we were obligating post, uh, as a, as a special, uh, there's some special action within the...
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Dr. Mensah, thanks for being here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, two questions. Uh, one, are there other districts in the state that are trying to do a referendum? And then, two, um, have you done a comparative analysis in respect to Colonial School District's facilities compared to other school districts, et cetera?
So first, yes, there are several other districts that are going out to referendum. If you did not aware, Applicatus went to referendum in December and failed. It was an operating and a capital ask. Randy Wine is going out right now, today. They're voting today. Brent Clay is on the twenty-eighth for an operating and a capital ask. We are on the twenty-ninth with an operating and a capital. Smyrna, Kate Henalopen, and Apo is now going back out. They've announced it today sometime near. So we are not the only district in the state that is seeking this opportunity to get the taxpayer to help fund, fund us. In terms of a comparative analysis of other districts, I can't necessarily, I don't have the analysis of the other districts, but...
I'm sorry. I meant something, for example, like you mentioned, like the, some of the athletic fields.
Sure, so...
How do our fields look compared to a middle town?
Deplorable, unsafe, they're borderline unsafe. It's embarrassing, actually, quite frankly. We, if you look at William Penn High School over the last ten years and you look at the investment we've made inside the walls, Penn Farm, the bistro, the phlebotomy lab, the innovation center, the library that's now like a state-of-the-art facility for students, the digital media studio that does all the ads and things that you see on YouTube and our, and our social media, our computer science program, our ROTC program. We have invested heavily on the academics because back, I was, again, I was principal there in two thousand and five before when people said, "Look, this is tired old school. We're not doing anything. We're just sitting at desks and staring at teachers." So we built this thing that was William Penn where there's programs and engage students and learn real world trades and skills to help them decide what they want to do. Invested tons of money into that, to the neglect of athletics. There has not been a significant upgrade to William Penn's athletic facilities in thirty years. And I just mean significant. I mean, yeah, we've touched up the dugouts. Yeah, we've, you know, uh, we've added some ADA compliant ramps on the home side of the stadium. The visitor side doesn't have handicap access. Our fields are, are borderline unsafe. We've had multiple injuries over the course of the last two seasons, specifically official breaking their ankle, couple of visiting of teams with torn, uh, ACLs that's on the football field and the same thing on the soccer field. Just drive down the road over the bridge, take a gander over at St. George's, Apo, go over to Newark Charter, go up to Epsteino. Those are state-of-the-art facilities that our students are going to go down to Caesar Rodney or Dover. Beautiful complexes if their students are participating. Our students, it's embarrassing. If you go watch on our website, if those of you who've been around a while, we have athletes who came back and coached for us and worked for us. Charlie standing in the William Penn weight room, that he helped put together the equipment that's there right now in nineteen eighty-five. It's still there, same stuff, in the same room. It's time. It's time for students of the Colonial School District to have a better opportunity when they go to athletics.
Dr. Mensah, thank you for coming, um, and presenting these facts. Um, I, well, first, this is easy one, um, does, um...
You're not allowed to ask a second.
Does Eisenberg Elementary School also get improvement on their playground? I drive there every single day. Eisenberg?
Yes.
Like, and that's just, I'm, I wanted to email you before just to see like what's happening with the playground. It's kind of sad.
Every, every elementary school is getting an, up, is slated to get an upgraded playground and Eisenberg's definitely is sad. I would tell you, go look at Pleasantville. It's even sadder. I just talked to the neighbor behind Pleasantville who asked me that at the forum we just had. He said, "You could do something about that." and said, you could do something about that, because that's embarrassing. I said, that's, that's on the books.
Unfortunately, right, not, not that, just curious. And then, if this is to be voted in successfully, what is the kind of timeline that you're looking for, these, especially capital projects?
Capitals, the, the projects are five years, over five years, and each one has been kind of steeped out in our application to the, to the state. I don't have the exact schools right off the top of my head, but the bulk of them are in like year three and four. The, the ones that are the farthest out, I believe, Southern and Wilbur are slated to get secure vestibule entrances, but because of the design of those buildings being so unique, that that's, those are north of 105, 105 million, 1.5 million dollars each. Their great thing is that they're the identical school, so it's like one set of little prints, really simple. But those projects are like in year five, I believe, but it should be over the next five years if the capital committees are passed.
Thank you. And then, I'm asking a third question. We as a city are having a playground subcommittee that's looking at Battery Park Playground, as well as the playgrounds across the city, so could your office share with us strategies around picking equipment for, especially for, you know, ADA compliant equipment?
Sure. I think you're, you're, I saw it today, by the way, it's really super exciting, that rendering that I saw, is anything that's going to be happening in this community goes, it's very, very exciting. The Kalmar Nippon Field.
Yeah, something like that, that's the idea.
So I do know that that came to my office from our principal of Leach School, which is our school for, you know, severe and profound disabled, and she's encouraging all her staff to join you in your forums, so that they can part and share their insights.
That'll be great.
Yeah, so she definitely, they're all in. In fact, Carrie Downey Elementary School, last year, they have a STEM club that meets in the library during lunch, and their Lego STEM challenge was to design and build an ADA compliant playground. And so they had to research all that stuff.
That's awesome.
I'd love to have them present, they probably got the answer.
That'll, that'll be great.
Anything on TikTok, like they're all good, right? So, like, they built these cool playgrounds with Legos, and then they presented them at the STEM showcase, and they actually presented them in the school board. So we are definitely all in, I mean, there will be people jumping up for that. I mean, I have to say, that was perfect timing for us. What better case to make than playgrounds are important? There's nothing better. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question. The state's covering 60%, and we're, the rest of us are covering 40. What are the other districts getting, they getting things covered by 60%?
Capital is 60-40, that's the formula for the state. Red Clay's, Clay is in a similar situation. Most districts north of the canal are not in the space of expansion and building new schools, because that's how you get a new school, student growth and enrollment. Our enrollment is fairly flat, if not declining a little bit since COVID. We're not going to grow to need a new high school or a new building. That would be, we would have to have some serious, you know, we would have to do some real creative enrollment numbers to make it look like our buildings are bursting at the seams in order to generate a new building. So Red Clay is, they've kind of tapped out their market, I believe, they built a couple of elementary schools in the last 10 years. Some of their schools are aging as well, they're in that rep, upgrade and improvement mode. We're not, Apo, where they're, they're sitting in meetings like this and improving 700 home subdivisions like hand over fist, like I, that's what I see coming down there, and it's like, oh my God, like that's, new school campuses, elementary, middle, high school, just popping up right across from Summit Airport. There's an elementary school now there, there's going to be a middle school and a high school soon enough, but that's, that's not going to happen in Colonial. And, or, I don't foresee it happening here in Newcastle County. We're pretty, we're pretty much limited to the properties that we have.
I just want to say, especially to you and to the people in the audience, that our high school has a number of programs that are actually available to the public. Catering from Penn's Bistro and, and the printing services, and some other video development and such.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, Penn's Bistro, under the leadership of Kit Poole, catered my wedding, so, and it was fabulous, I know they cater some of the trustee events. So it's open to the public, and I believe you just need to call the school, and they'll reference you to the department you need.
Yeah, there's a website. When we redesigned William Penn back in 2009, Race to the Top Time, 2009, 10, and 11, the goal was to make real-world learning valuable on the site. It wasn't necessarily, we don't want to just teach math, but like, how do you use math? How do you use science? And so, in that, embedded in that model, in order to generate the energy around it, it's like, okay, well, that's good, but why don't you make some money for it? Because if you're going to do this, we want to send you on trips, we want you to go places. So your fundraising is your business. So Penn Bistro will rent, they'll cater services, cater events. Insight Pharmaceutical used them to host their opening, grand opening breakfast for their new place in Wilmington two years ago, before COVID. It was like a $300 internationally attended event that they cater. They got, and what's great is who runs the books? The accounting class. Like, so the accounting class runs the books for the Bistro, for Penn Farm, for the, for the, they're telling them, like, look, you're getting, you're killing its own profits here. Like, granted, you can't, like, it's not true profits, but it's like, you know, it's a real deal. Farm, if you could be a part of the CSA, and the farm sells food to our own Nutrition Services Department to serve our students in the cafeteria, so they get seasonal foods in their cafeteria, so it, there are business opportunities there. Now, our students who are phlebotomists, they do draw blood, but they do it, like, you don't have, you, you can go if you want to go, if you're like intrigued by this, I'm not kidding. When they're at that phase of their class, they need to have 30 live draws in order to sit for the phlebotomy exam. They'll take any arm, any arm, sometimes two. Like, literally, I've been through there with visitors, and the girls and the guys are all lined up with their little things like this in the classroom, just walking around, stopping people. And some people are like, double me up, and they have all the, it's just like a blood bank, they have all the chairs lined up, and they have to get 30 of them. So we are there to engage the public, whether it's in that kind of way, or if you want to cater, have an event cater, digital media, if you want flyers, wedding invites, if you want social media advice and guidance, they, they, the kids are dynamical. There's two videos on our referendum website that were done by students. No, no adult interference, other than here's the space we're supervising you. The Charlie Hope video I just talked about, and the one, the young lady talking about the tents course. Those were done all by students. Produced, written, directed, filmed, edited, all by students. So I strongly, I strongly encourage you, we're here, we're not, you know, there was a time when we were very standoffish, so many of you, I've been around for 33 years, I student taught William Penn in 1991. I've never left. I love, I love Colonial School District. It is a space that I, I, I wouldn't see my career go any other way, I really wouldn't. Some of you know me from my time at William Penn, so you could try to, just try to remember that I'm a different person now? No. Some of you remember me, and I remember you, and I see you all over the place, and it's a good feeling. I really, I believe that Colonial can do a lot of good. I'm excited for some opportunities to engage in Newcastle City. Thank you for opening up the door to our staff around the concepts. I also would just encourage you that our kids are also fully engaged in that space. Thank you for that segue and allowing me to get on myself, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, they're going to take you up on the, I'll just leave these with you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, we'll now go back to our regular sequence and have the treasures report. Oh, excuse me, minutes of the last meeting. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. This is part of the treasures report.
Good evening. This is an unaudited treasure report as of January 31st, 2024. The total unrestricted funds, $9,412,489.42. Total restricted funds, $2,589,815.42. Total in the cash accounts, $12,2,304.46. I don't think I have any specific differences. There was one in the capital, capital outlay on page four of your budget report that was significant between December and January, and it was, we did some curbing, and it was done by Gregor and Ferrera out on 10th Street, and it was a necessary situation. We did curbs and drainage, so it was, it was pretty significant. That's the only thing I have that's outstanding.
Okay, any questions from council, from this bar? Is there a motion to approve the treasures report subject to audit?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Report is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
As we've been doing in the absence of a city administrator, I'll give the administrative report. But you may have noticed, if you've come into town, that the work on the intersection at Sixth and Delaware began last week with replacement of the granite curbing. I talked to someone from Delphi who advises that repaving will be done as soon as the weather's warm enough, blacktop plants to open. Denrec recently approved the permit for our floating pier after a long delay. I think one reason for the delay was a confluence of events. The person managing the project, the Denrec retired, which coincided with the departure of our city administrator, and not long before that, our city engineer, Dave Athie, who'd been very involved, became seriously ill and subsequently died. So with the loss of all those people, this project seems to have kind of slipped off the table for a while, but we've picked it back up the line. The secretary at Denrec signed off on it. I'm working with Mr. Athie Supervisor at AECOM, the firm we work with for engineering services, and he is previously involved in the project, and is trying to get things moving. Mayor Leary and Chief Mayuski are also working on it, so we hope this is going to get moving again. Our code enforcement officer, Uriel Casell, has announced his retirement after over seven years with the city of Newcastle. Mr. Casell also worked closely with the tree advisory commissioner and was very helpful to them. His last day of work will be this Friday, February 16th. We wish him well in his retirement. We're beginning the process, we're hiring a replacement, and until then, Mr. Burkscomb will handle some things, and will work with a contractor to fill the gaps in the necessary code enforcement. The recent, well, now it's a couple weeks back, freezing rain and thawing opened up potholes around town, big surprise. Public Works is trying to keep up with them. They patched a large pothole that was at the intersection of South and Fourth out here, very near Goodwill, so it was a, a risk to their equipment, and there have been numerous patches to potholes on Third Street extended, and the Public Works Director believes it needs to be repaved as the patches are no longer holding. This is technically part of Wilmington Road, which makes it Delphi's jurisdiction, so I've been in touch with them, and they're going to try to get it on their list, they promise it's as to when, though. Sort of related to the treasures report, an audit of the city's accounts for fiscal 23 is, which ended June 30th last year, is nearing completion, and we will have a presentation to council once the report's written and ready for our review, and related also to the budget. The council completed its mid-year budget review last week. The treasurer reported that we did a pretty good job projecting income and expenses when we prepared the budget last spring. As usual, we were conservative in these projections, and so we're now in pretty good shape. Several income items, such as property transfer taxes and delinquent tax collections, came in well over the projected amounts, and we, we have received 101% of the projected property, regular property tax payments for the current year. So this extra income means that we will be able to complete some projects that we now have estimates that show them to be higher than the amount we originally budgeted. And these include completing the refurbishment of the interior of the police station, the purchase of an audiovisual system for this room, to make it easier for all of you to hear what we're saying and what people at the podium are saying, hear the recorder to pick up more easily, and also will make it possible for us to show PowerPoints and other types of presentations, which is particularly helpful when maps and zoning requests and so forth are involved, because that gets pretty hard to describe without you looking at it. Another item, we had budgeted funds for the repair of the roof of the trolley barn, which houses our Public Works Department. Before that work was initiated, another section of the roof was damaged in the January 9th windstorm. The estimate for all these repairs now exceeds the amount budgeted. However, there may be some insurance involved because of the wind damage, so we're working with our insurance agent, we see how all these numbers come down. Our budget for this fiscal year did include funds for the dog park. Mr. Zelt and his group of volunteers are beginning the process of getting dibs for clearing the land and installing fencing. And Mr. Savaka and I met with students assigned to our project to create an accessible database of pending and approved building projects with associated documentation, maps, plans, reports, et cetera. The students asked what we're looking for, and we discussed what additional information they need from us. Planning Commission, Margot Raine, Chair, Planning Commission Chair, Martha Raine, joined us for part of the meeting, and we'll be meeting regularly with the students as this project moves forward. So that's the administrative report. Chief McCabe?
Good evening, thank you very much. I have a few things for council today. First, I apologize for the delay, once again, with my monthly report, we are working through some glitches on the state database that is holding things up, but hopefully everybody got it last night if there aren't any questions. I just wanted to touch on a few things. I think probably since, since I was in this position, this may have been the lowest calls for service month in a while, so, you know, crime and calls for service continue to decline, and I, again, credit that to our folks out there every night, on the way they patrol, how they control, and, and the relationships they've developed with their communities. I always post response times, that's a significant factor in crime reduction for us. You may notice that some of them look high. I do out, I do describe some of the outliers, but I wanted to pay close attention to the factor. Most of them seem to be above the five-minute mark, which is kind of what we shoot for. The reality is, most of our response times are in the, in the area of two minutes, but the outliers do have that effect, so, but this was more, highlighted more this month than usual, so, and, and those outliers were typically, there were calls for service that were outside of the jurisdiction, that our officers don't necessarily call on the radio that they're on scene, which basically stops the clock, or starts the clock in either scenario. So if you saw those yellow highlights, that's the factor, that's the reason behind that. I don't know if there's any other questions on the monthly report.
Any questions, of council?
I, I know you've heard me talk about the importance of listening to what's happening maybe on county or state level. In the last few weeks, tonight specifically, the county held a public safety committee airing retention, recruitment was, was an issue. The state held theirs with JFC last month or last week. There is that consistent theme again, that recruitment is an issue. Depending on who's delivering the message, the word crisis may or may not get used. You know that I've used the word. It may be different for us than it does for other agencies because of the fact that, that we have folks working for us that are marketable, and we've had this discussion, and, and your help in helping retain the people that we have has been remarkable, and has resonated throughout the state, I might add. But it's, we still have that issue. We weren't completely successful, we did lose an officer, so I'm short one right now. And we're, again, being lured away from the, the competition that's out there. So it's going to increase, agencies are suffering at a great level, and two, two themes that I've heard both from the state and county level was, there's an acknowledgement that we are sitting on, on officers that are marketable, and they're acknowledging that municipal agencies are, or could potentially suffer from this. We're in a good place, thanks to you all, for, for a while. But we do have a contract coming up in July, but it's going to have some impact on long-term effects, so I wanted to, to point that out. We have a very unique scenario, this is one of the oldest police departments in this area. We have a remarkable relationship with our elected officials. We have a remarkable relationship with our community, and our officers recognize that. This is a good working environment, and I think that, along with the relationship that we have with you, has been incredibly impactful in keeping our folks here. But we are at a critical phase where the natural progression to want to leave, to go somewhere else, that may be provide another level of policing that doesn't exist here. That's a natural progression that exists anywhere. It's being disrupted by recruiting techniques that say, we're so short, we're going to reach out to our good folks and say, come work for us. I'll give you 25 grand. Come work for us. I'll move you over and, and leave you as a sergeant. Come work for us. I'll put you right into a K-9 unit. You know, come work for us. I'll put you on a SWAT team. So we've addressed this at a state level. And we have created what we hope is a very robust research and marketing and recruiting campaign. We're now hunting for the funding. And I just wanted to point that out to you, that this is a collaborative effort. For the most part, agencies are working together, recognizing that the non-traditional recruiting techniques that exist right now are going to damage the profession as a whole. And these 60, 90, 120-second response times that we're enjoying here are not going to be here for that short. And this is across the state. This is, there are agencies downstate right now that are really, really suffering. So I wanted to put that kind of on your radar. Maybe keep your, your ears to the ground when you hear the conversations. I was a little disturbed to hear that it was almost something we need to accept, is that we're going to lose folks to these larger agencies so that they can stay whole. I've shared this with my colleagues of the larger agencies. You took, you take six of my people, hypothetically. You're no better tomorrow than you are, than you were today with six people. But we are decimated. And I think most recognize that. But in a state of panic, I think, you know, and there are, there are consequences to these larger agencies that can't typically fill a complement. In some cases, in the states, it's in, in the state's situation, if, if they don't remain at a certain complement in a certain county, they owe that county money. So there's a lot of moving parts to this. So, again, I put this on your radar to, just to let you know that, one, what you've done to this point has been remarkable and sent messages up and down the state. And, you know, when we get to the point where we're talking to our folks soon, we keep them whole, we make them whole, we stay competitive, we're going to stay whole because of the relationships you've developed. And I thank you for, for your year on this. We are, we are just about ready to schedule our re-accreditation. We've set all of our records out to be evaluated by two different assessors. It's called a mock assessment. It's come back with some work. Next week or so, we should get that cleaned up and then schedule a date. We hope that, we hope, if this works out, if not by the March meeting, then maybe certainly by the April meeting, we can proudly say that we've been re-accredited. And then we can give some more information there. I look forward to working with council, specifically Council Madaway, with Police Advisory Committee that's, that we're going to start talking about soon. I did want to give council an update that the Post position, the executive director of Post has been named. He's retired major from the state police. I can't think of a better person for this job. He literally is, was designed for this job. His entire career is about training. It's about standardization. So he is working right now on a document to provide all governments to give a guideline so that we're within the parameters of the new law, House 206, that outlines these advisory committees. And I have said this publicly at the state level, that if you wanted an example of how to create a committee, come to the city of Newcastle. You all have done this for years, and, and you're very, very, very good at it. So I don't think this is going to be a huge lift. But I just wanted to also put that on your radar. We, we have plenty of time. But there will be some guidelines with, that the law says mirror the existing post. The idea is, is you don't have, you don't have to do what Post did, but you want to mirror that. So, and that's with respect to the makeup of the committee. Next month, I hope to present my annual report. Hopefully, it will be online first. I hope to give it to you in advance, because it is typically very lengthy. It will, it will include a breakdown of crime stats, a comparison of the last few years, all of our outreach initiatives of the last year or so. And then I'm going to add the transparency report that I typically add to a tab on my website. I'm going to add this to the annual report that does a breakdown of forced complaints. I think we have pursuit reviews, discipline, action taken, and then breakdown of enforcement by demographic breakdown. These are all things that we've been doing for a very long time here. And this is a lot of what, a lot of the recent conversation about transparency policing has been asking for. And then last, I know I've talked about this a lot, but we are in, really, we're in full gear with our, with our behavior health initiative. So we've given it a name. It's called CORE, Community Outreach Response Engagement. Every, we just today got, I have it in here somewhere, all of our cards that are, I think I talked about this before. We had about a thousand of these cards made up. And every one of our officers is going to have one of these, so that when they come in contact with anybody who's got substance abuse issue or a mental health issue, they're going to hand this card out with a number to contact a peer interventionist that we have hired now. We have, through, through our partnership with the community collaboration in Delaware, we've hired two, one full-time peer outreach and one part-time peer outreach, and a case manager. So that all the data we collect is going to be managed so that we can come back next time we talk about this. We're not talking about it theoretically. We're going to talk about what kind of, what kind of results we have. So this card goes to somebody who's in crisis with, with substance abuse. It doesn't matter, for the most part, why we came into contact with you. You could have maybe shot with it. We recognize that, that the underlying issue in, in why you're doing what you're doing to substance abuse, you're going to get one of these cards. You're still going to get a summons for shot putting, but you're going to get one of these cards. We do have a diversion program, because we signed an MOU with Hero Health. So if they are eligible for diversion, we'll absolutely take that into consideration. But we don't want to walk away from somebody that's got an issue. So we, we give them this, this card, and they have the ability to reach out. This card will then, their data will then be collected, submitted to the peer group, where the peer group will do a follow. So the first part of this, we call it the contact. So we have contact with somebody in crisis. The second part of it is going to be the connect. We want our peer interventionists and our folks that are suffering from the substance abuses ordered to connect. And we're going to keep track of each one of these steps. So we'll have a, we'll have a list of how many connects we had, and then how many connections we had. Then the next step is, can we get them into service? Is it, whether it's maybe it's a recovery house, maybe it's some kind of intervention, whatever it takes. If we're successful in getting them into these services, we're going to track that as a service. And then the last is, we're going to work on a timeframe. I think 30 days is what we decided. If we're lucky enough to have these folks participate in whatever service we get them into for 30 days, we call that a stay. So it's connect, it's contact, connect, service, stay. And then we're going to be able to provide data to suggest, to show this. We are working with, and I just saw this today for the first time, I was excited to see that after a very long time, we have now have access to what's called an overdose map. This overdose map is, is, contains, I don't know if any of you remember the heat maps that I used to do back during some of my council presentations, but very similar. You see the state of Delaware, and then anytime there's an overdose in our county, you'll see a circle. An overdose in the triangle, that's a fatal overdose. And then it'll, it'll show where it's happening. We'll be able to see real time where these, where these things are happening. So our, our folks that are monitoring this are going to have access to this. And the data is done from three different places, basically. Police reports, OEMS, which is fantastic. They clean us up. If we don't necessarily classify something as an overdose because we thought maybe it was an assist, or we were sent because it was trouble breathing or a heart attack, and we never really fixed the classification, EMS comes in and fixes that for us. And then forensic science, the coroner has been willing to enter this data. So this is a very strong database that we're going to have access to. It's going to show in real time what this problem looks like. And I know I've shared this with, with you, that the grant that we got to do this was for the entire 720. So our numbers don't look that bad in the city, but we're surrounded by a lot of problems. And it's, it impacts us. We all, so we're really excited that this is up and running. And hopefully, the next time we talk about it, we have some data and not just talk about the concept. And I think that's, that's it. If there's any questions.
Any other questions?
First of all, chief, thank you for looking for resources to get for this program and hiring the folks that will be part of the core team. And then training, I'm sure there was a significant training for existing staff on your team to, you know, be able to, you know, engage with, with people. Not, yes, you're getting a summon, but you're also getting, you know, like recognizing these cues. But my question is, do you know what is, you know, from the programs that already exist, you know, what's, you know, what is the percentage of, of people that, from contact to connection, right? How many, you know, is, is there data on that? And then how many, you know, is there any data on, as you make a connection, how many people move to either stay or, what was it, service? Right? Service then stay, right? Is there any, anything to that, to that, like that you know of already? Because I don't want to be skeptical, but I'm just wondering how many people will go from, you know, getting this card to trap, you know, putting it in the trash and never, never making that connection. I, I hope everybody does, first of all. But I, I just wonder if there's any data on this.
So first, I don't know that there's any other model that mirrors this. I think this is a hybrid kind of, the other part of this is the fact that we've hired a clinician who's going to arrive at this part-time too. I don't know that there's any other model. I was asked that same question today by the folks that were giving me access to the overdose map, because we have a report writing system now that requires us to enter data that D-SAM is supposed to track. And we just don't, I don't have those numbers. And, and I don't know that it's as specific as what we're looking to do. So, now, there may be a model out there. We'll meet, we'll meet, right now, the database we're building is old-fashioned Word Excel or Microsoft Excel, right? So the database that we're going to create through Redcap, it's University of Delaware program, they've done, the county has something similar, but not, not completely so. I don't know that there's a model out here to give you those numbers. We are literally, at least, and from, from this initiative, starting from scratch. To your point, generally speaking, without the terminology that we're using, it's not, I don't know how successful this is. I don't think the numbers are that high. I, I believe we're going to have a very high contacting connect rate. After that, we'll, we'll see. But that's just be speculated. We, I think we gave the example, one of our officers was approached at a gas pump for somebody that said, I'm in trouble. I just got out of rehab. If I don't get somewhere right now, spoke for crack. And we, this program, by the end of the day, had him in a recovery house.
That's great.
So, and then, and that's, that's all four in one day. I mean, he, well, the stay was 30 days later, but three out of four in one day, and then 30 days later, he's a stay. So hopefully, they all go like that.
Yeah. And then what can we do to promote this? And second of all, will you track that, what you just said, basically, when you issue a card, like the, the contact?
Yes.
Will you track that as well, even successful, not successful, just, you know, like in reasoning and like circumstances as well, right?
Yes. So that maybe not the, for the next report I give on this will be a breakdown of the last, maybe I did this month, depending on how many we have. But last month, we had 100 contacts. I'll throw it out there. I don't know if it can be counted. But we'll do contacts and that, we'll break that down.
Thank you.
And then as far as outreach is concerned, the more you can talk about it, that's why I ran out and grabbed, you know, the superintendent. I mean, we're, we're going to wave the flag as Mr. McKay. And we, we have a plan to have those, both those billboards come in in 273 and 141 with this initiative in mind. So with the number.
That's great.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I also left out, in April, Peter Hay, most of you have dealt with the traffic engineering issues in the city of Newcastle, has a safety summit and asked me to present this project at that safety summit. So we're going to, we're going to wave the flag, get as much attention as we can. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Burgstrom, do you have anything for us? I'm not putting you on the spot. If you don't, you don't. You just came back. I know.
Next week's our, our community rating system annual checkup, so we're definitely fast to make sure that that goes along.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask him questions now, or should I ask him during communications?
Well, he's just back from vacation yesterday. But maybe give him a heads up on things you can say about. All right, go ahead.
Just noticed pothole on Sixth and South today.
Yes.
Is that being picked, like, is that, you know, something that's going to be resolved past, you know?
I hope so. There's a couple of issues I have with Delphi right now, including the weather, interest in flooding, you know, across the street from our, so that's, that's...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Council Communications. Let's start down here, Mr. Kay.
Sure. I just have two things. So I read an article the other day about Delphi collecting 91,000 bags of trash in the past year. I'm sure most of you in here have noticed the amount of trash around our community. Many of the gateways are full of trash. So I'm trying to form a volunteer litter picking group. I have a Facebook page that's up. There's a letter to the editor. I hope it's published this week. I think it should be, that announces this. Our, it will be published this week. Thank you. Our first event will be Sunday, February 18th at 3:00 PM. We'll meet at the, at the old SPCA right here on South Street. We'll litter pick down Seventh Street. If we have enough volunteers, we can go out Washington Street. Again, this is just all volunteer. It's not city sponsored. I'm supplying the bags. I'll have a couple extra vendors. But if anybody's interested, I hope to do this, hope to start mapping the areas that we clean and, and kind of make a difference. So that was my first thing. The other thing I wanted to say is I just wanted to thank Suzanne Souter. So since the city administrator has left, she has picked up many, many duties and responsibilities. And we know she's the elected official, and it's her responsibility. But there's a big difference between doing something and getting paid full-time and being paid here as the council president for less than a part-time job. So she has done a lot, coordinated a lot of meetings, emails. So I just wanted to say thank you. I do appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, this is all.
Just a key thing is the dog park. For everyone doesn't know, in the Hermitage area, the trust is going to be giving us some land. It's 150 feet by 200 feet. And we're looking to see how we need to get the area cleared out and then get some designs in place to get some parking, as well as then design for a small dog park for the smaller dogs, and then a bigger size for the larger dogs.
Counsel, counsel person, I thought it was yard, sorry. Was that, that was feet?
It was feet.
Okay.
David, since you're here.
What's that?
No, the other...
It's 100 feet by 150 feet.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Madaway?
Thank you, Council President. It was brought to my attention last month that we lost Mr. Charles Fleetwood, who worked at the city for a long period of time in the Public Works Department. And then recently, the city and family members lost Ms. Diaz Santos, Ms. Alice Jacobs, and Ms. Gloria Kautowski. I would like to congratulate all the local businesses. Many of them have been acknowledged as some of the top restaurants or businesses in Delaware. So I would like to thank them and congratulate them for that distinguished This past Saturday, myself, Mayor Leary, and Councilman Zubaka met with several residents in our community engagement event that was put on by Mayor Leary. Really enjoyed that, and I'm looking forward to participating in more of those to come. And then I would like to see if we can do something in regards to the city website in terms of revamping it. Definitely think there's opportunity there specifically. I would like to see if we can make an effort to send out electronically city council meeting minutes and other subcommittee meeting minutes to folks where they can sign up to get an email blast of those minutes in addition to setting up the Newcastle Crier electronically. We have a lot of people who love Newcastle, who moved away, but they very much are a part of our community. I would like to know about what's happening. It also can serve as a marketing tool for outsiders and visitors to be apprised of things that are happening from month to month. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Zubaka?
Thank you. Wanted to say, Mr. Engel, thank you for your service. That was incredible to hear how many years you served in the city and state as a marshal. And Joe, thank you for starting that group of... And Joe, thank you for starting that group of cleaning up. I got an invite last night and I invited some people and they, they reached out saying, is this, you know, sponsored by the city? I'm like, honestly, I don't think so, but, you know, I think we'll find out tomorrow at the meeting. But I was still inviting people because I figured, you know, we're, you know, we're just there for the same goal. And then one thing I thought of perhaps that we should do is reach out to Lions Club, maybe, because I know they do a shore cleanup, too, so perhaps tapping into their volunteer base would be helpful, too, and perhaps they're already, you know, showing up anyways, but just a thought. For the, for the website that Councilperson Sauter already mentioned, we have met with U D students, but the only thing I wanted to talk there that's, that's new is that we have emailed the students, they, they sent us an initial proposal of what they want to accomplish and we kind of revised it to say, to include some things like, you know, details and overview of all the projects that are either pending or approved, the details, you know, so you can hover over and see a little more details, a, a subpage about exhibits and documents that have been submitted, so think about all those concept plans and stuff. And then public meeting notes linked to those particular projects, so if you're going to have to search through, if you're just looking for a certain, certain project, so you can see all of that link there. So that's very exciting for us in that sense and to Brian's comment, we have talked about the potential of revamping the website, too, through this same project. We have told the students that our priority right now is the projects part. We didn't want them to fail, basically, because they only have one semester to complete this. So we told them, try to see if you can carry this out during semester and if you can, give us at least suggestions or, you know, if you do have extra time to complete that as well, that will be great, but then, you know, I think we're going to be looking into continuing this probably next semester, if that's not completed, to, to look into some, you know, modernization efforts for, before the city, cities website. For community outreach, I, I agree, it was, it was great conversations that we had. I, I would just encourage even more residents to, you know, use these opportunities to come and, you know, give us your solutions and ideas for some of these things that you think, you know, are either bothering you or you, you know, that are happening in the city because, you know, we're just, you know, individuals here, you know, voted to represent you. So, you know, we don't, we're not experts in everything, right? So we do like to listen to your ideas. If you have any opinions or concerns, you know, that we are not bringing up in the council, that, that would be great. Playground, our committee has officially, in their last meeting, and requested the funding, to, to request for funding to the city council, so I have shared that with Council, Council President Sauter, so this will be a part of the discussion in sometime later, when we're talking about F five twenty-five. This is relating to ARPA funding, I think, is the, is the, the request for, you know, phase two of the playground that we were talking about earlier tonight. One of the things of that is going to be ADA compliant surfacing of the playground that there was brought up to our attention, which is basically vaporized surfacing. So we're comparing that to mulch and seeing the pricing differences and, you know, maintenance and all that stuff, the, the, the cost and getting the quotes. Last thing there is, I would really encourage residents of each neighborhoods to volunteer your time, either as providing input on kind of what playground equipment you would like to see or not see in, in your neighborhood. And then secondly, encourage you to, you know, volunteer your time a little more in a sense of becoming a part of subcommittee or, you know, volunteering to, to, to serve with somebody in the subcommittee from your neighborhood. The, the way the system's set up right now is we need, you know, at least one neighbor to help, you know, with a, with a satellite playgrounds that we're talking about throughout the city, so, so that you could champion that engagement in, in your community with your neighbor, so that we know kind of what, what, what these, what are the next steps. Feel free to reach out to me or Suzanne Swift or, you know, come to playground subcommittee meetings with your ideas or, you know, volunteer your time. And lastly, I wanted to mention that, you know, Encore, which is a newly founded nonprofit Old Newcastle Outdoor Recreation, has been incorporated, and they have been working for about several years, informally in a sense, they were a nonprofit, in submitting grants for, you know, playground in, in the past. And they have, they're still working on it, so I just wanted to give an update, that they have submitted two grants recently, one actually to, to trustees, were, close to submitting a term right now to A R P for, you know, elderly citizens, like shading systems and benches. So it's communications with trustees right now about that project, and then fifteen other grants have been identified for, for funding. So just, just to give an update that there are some other things happening in this world. So this is just kind of like Playground Subcommittee, that'll be all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, this is from the mayor.
I'd just like to recognize and thank again Mr. Cleveland for his significant service, not just to the city and the fire department here in the city, but to the state as a whole, as the state fire marshal. It was really exciting to receive an invitation to tour the sheriff's house on January fifth. I met with Joshua, Superintendent Joshua Bowles and his staff. It's been over ten years in the making and it's exciting to see the final, the final outcome. Having had the opportunity well over twelve years ago to actually tour that building, I, I have a reference point to know how far it has come. And yes, they did keep the jail cells, so they'll, they'll still be there. A residence preview will come in March, so be looking for information on that. And that'll be followed by a formal open house one day during the week of April twenty-first to twenty-seventh, and again, more information will be coming. Again, our community outreach on February tenth at the library, we got some really great information and input and we'll be following up on that. And thank you to Councilpersons Malloway and Zubaka for participating and bringing the doughnuts and coffee. The next one will be March ninth at the Buttonwood School from ten AM to twelve noon, and Councilpersons Day and Malloway will be joining me there. The Delaware Historic Society offered, is offering a tour on February twenty-fifth entitled, These Houses Were Home: Five Generations of Black Community in Old Newcastle. It's being led by PhD candidate from the University of Delaware, Melissa Binbow, who interned at the Reed House during the summer of twenty twenty-three. And she did research on the African-American population of Old Newcastle from the eighteen-hundreds to nineteen forty. Unfortunately, it sold out quickly, you, it, it's full. But I had emailed and asked if they either make that part of their regular programming or they at least add another tour or two for the benefit of anyone else who would like to do that. And finally, here we are on Fat Tuesday. Mardi Gras is French for Fat Tuesday. It's also called Road Tuesday, Carnival Tuesday, or in some cases Pancake Tuesday, depending on where your celebration is taking place. But no matter the day, it's generally, maybe not for us in this room, a day of revelry that includes carriages, parties, and gastronomic overindulgence before the Christian fasting season of Lent, which begins tomorrow on Valentine's Day. So laissez le bon temps rouler, as they would say, let the good times roll, and happy Valentine's Day, if you can make them all into one thing. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I only have one thing tonight for the council president's comments. As you see on the agenda, if you've looked at it, tonight we will vote on the selection of a new city administrator and on the contract between the city and the administrator. We're not naming the new administrator tonight because the person selected didn't want to give notice at their current job until their selection and contract are officially approved. I think we can all understand that. And after the meeting tonight, I'll send an email to this person, if it passes, advising them of this, then assuming that if it's approved, that they will give notice tomorrow at their current job. And they've asked us to wait twenty-four hours before we make it public here. Again, Delmore's a small place and I understand why they don't want their coworkers to learn through the grapevine that they're leaving, they want to be able to tell them themselves. So I think that's understandable. So on Thursday afternoon, all goes according to schedule, I'll be sending out notices, which include a biography of our new city administrator, to the mayor, the chief of police, the director of public works, the chairs of all our boards and commissions, the trustees, and of course to the weekly and to the online newsletter, Newcastle City Topics, and it'll be posted on the city website. So we're going to get the word out there. And at this point, the tentative first date of, date the person will report is March twenty-fifth. That's the plan. So, um, Goodwill Fire Company.
Good evening, everyone. You should have received our January twenty twenty-four review in your information packet. In this report, we've added the additional requested information referenced to the outline of the response area. We've also added the percentages associated with the run numbers and the incidents by hour for both fire and EMS. The front of the report, all the information is in orange, that was all EMS data, and then starting at page ten starts all the fire data. One thing that I did want to point out, on page nine at the top there, the column disposition incident for patients is blank. The State of Delaware reporting system for EMS, DEEMERS, went through a pretty significant update and change in the beginning of January. For some reason, all of that information did not transfer over from the existing version to the new version. So it, it's just showing ninety-nine calls for service, kind of in a flex state there. A high percentage of those calls are BLS transports. So if you look at the number of the, the category directly below that. So that is, that's why there's this skewed number with that. If you have any questions on this, please keep either ask now or if you'd follow it with myself or Captain Moore afterwards, that is, that is okay. I do have some additional information. We are in the early stages of planning a, a water supply drill for the city of Newcastle, hopefully on Saturday, April twentieth. What this will do is, to provide some historical context, over the summer, we were requested, Goodwill was requested to respond to Chester County to assist with, assist Oxford Fire Department with a fire they had that overwhelmed their water system. Just about less than a month ago, North Brunswick, New Jersey, had a significant incident where they had a water main break during the fire incident, required some outside of the box thinking. We obviously are in a position where we have the complete trust of and trust in M S C, but we also understand that our water system is whole, just like this town. So we want to put, to test some pre-plans we've developed that hopefully, you know, we can either determine that, you know, our math and our, our thought process is spot on, or that we need to make some changes and develop that more. You know, this is, again, though, just, it's not just for a water system failure, you know, we can have incidents where we've got large fire volume or large fire loads in some of the warehouses that we protect. We talked about railcars earlier, I guess late last year, you know, it's an incident or a way to provide water to that. So there's a lot of good to it. And again, it's putting our, our pre-plans to a test to make sure that they are actually functional and tangible. So with this, there will, will come some parking inconveniences throughout the day. We will be issuing and announcing plenty of forewarning on that and working with the community for that. And finally, I know he's not here, but congratulations to Furio on his retirement. He's been a huge help for the Fire Company over the past, well, his entire term of employment, providing information and helping us get updated, work out that. Is there any questions from the council?
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you all very much, have a great night.
You, too. So next is public comments. Now the usual rules, please sign in, point you begin, state your name. Everyone has three minutes, that'll be shown on the timer. This is public comments on things on the agenda or things about the city, general things about the city.
My name is Pat Malingham, who took to Chester Street. I'm happy that I had been a part of this good meeting. I'm a very old person. What I, my observation, after I, pardon me, after I came back in April of last year, is that there, we all love our animals, especially our dogs, and there are people who are walking their dogs, I'm happy that they are doing that, but there are a few people of that lot who don't pick up their droppings. I think, I don't know what the city has about if they are caught not picking up their droppings, is there a fine or something for that particular person?
I seem to remember saying that, but I'm not positive.
My suggestion will be, this should be highlighted and, and at least a warning in the newsletter that anybody who is caught not picking up the dropping of their dog, dear dog, should be fined to start with one hundred dollars for that type of, it, it is very, medically, it's very bad. I think that drop has a lot of bacteria and various things. And my second thing is, there had been a problem of floods at the junction of six feet and the Newcastle Avenue, and then also very close on Ralph Nine, it gets flooded even with one inch of rain. Is there a definite plan about, because the federal government came up with an infrastructure plan where there is a lot of money assigned for repair of the, I think in my judgment, I'm an old man, there should be a flyover over that area where we get floods even with one inch of rain. Those are my suggestions. I may not live long, but I think we have a good city, we want to keep it clean and we'll care for it. Thank you all very much.
I'll just say briefly that that Ferry Avenue is Del Dodc's jurisdiction and we've been working with them for several years and are continuing to work with them to try to get that resolved.
Yeah, thank you for your update, but what I'm trying to say is, there was no infrastructure assignment until last year. So I think we should make sure it is given to the county, the state, and the federal government to so that they are, we are waiting for the funds. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Phil Gross, thirteen oh one Thirteenth Street. It's an issue from last year. I think I addressed the chief about it. Chief, you had mentioned that there was funding that was given to the police department to install cameras in the city. And of course, I'm not going to ask where because it's none of my business, but how many cameras have been installed from the money that was allotted from the state?
No, off the top of your head?
So it, there are no cameras that have been installed?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As far as ordinance five forty-four, I, I know about the parking and thank you again for clarifying that I had it backwards. The off-street loading and unloading, does anyone know, could you clarify, is, is it mandated as part of projects, current or future, that they provide off-street, off-public street parking and unloading of vehicles for restaurants, stores that are part of the project?
Is that part of this?
That's not part of this.
No, it's not part of this ordinance.
Okay, again, just like with the ordinance five forty-three, each of you have the right each of you have the right to amend and put your own personal thoughts on any project. So I urge that even for loading and unloading, that they not use city streets or public streets that they provided as part of the project. Unloading and loading areas.
Right, okay.
Getting back to 543 ordinance, I, we had a wonderful infomercial on why CBD oil and marijuana is wonderful for people's health. That's great. I'm not saying it shouldn't be sold. But in our city, I can definitely tell you that it will definitely diminish people's views and opinions on the wholesomeness of our city. And again, I urge each and one of you council people to please suggest and amend the marijuana part of the ordinance, that you include current and future sales of CBD oil not to be allowed within the historic district. Can go a mile out, mile over, mile up, but it's not appropriate in the city of Newcastle.
We need to stick to it again, because it's a different meeting.
I'm not up here to rebut what anybody else thinks. I figure I might as well take this opportunity to mention to all of you, you all remember when the SPCA was over here on South Street. How many people here have been to the new SPCA up on Churchman's Row? It's, it's a state-of-the-art facility, it's only three and a half miles away from here. I've been a volunteer there five days a week for the last two and a half years. I kind of run the laundry room there, I do a lot of the dirty work. They need volunteers. A lot of it is fun, you can walk the dogs, hang out, they have three big walk-in cat rooms. You can hang with cats, play with kittens. We need help doing laundry, making animal treats. And there's all sorts of special events that people can sign up for. And just, if you feel like coming in and hanging out with a dog or a cat for a little while, it's a great way to relax. And believe me, we need all the help we can get over there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody, my name's Mike Thatcher. It's gonna take about five seconds, real quick. Talked about the ban in mari- sales of marijuana and all that stuff. I don't think anyone's brought up the subject of cultivation of it. Like, in outside of the city, like any empty commercial buildings around here? Are you really, are you really willing to pass up on the tax dollars that that would create? Because you're gonna put an agriculture business out of business? You know, an illegal business, I guess? You know, it's something to think about. That's it.
And anyone else? No?
Okay, I wanna talk about some quality of life issues and some parking issues on, on East Third Street in particular, where I live. Chief, if you're free after the meeting, I might wanna talk to you. We talked about some of these things before, you're probably sick of hearing me talk about them. But I, I, you know, every so often I get angry at some things that are going on. It's the same stuff over and over again, people parking up on the sidewalk, people. As we speak right now, a next-door neighbor has a vehicle that he rarely uses, because he's got another car. Parked right in front of my front door, it's been there for over one month, hasn't moved. Tires are up on the sidewalk, up on the curb, that's supposed to be illegal. Okay? So he's out there right now, chief, I guarantee. So that's one issue. He's not the only one. He's maybe one of the worst offenders, but neighbors have told me there's other people that do it. I know why they do it, the streets are narrow, they were laid out 400 years ago. You know, people don't wanna get their side mirrors knocked off. But that's no excuse, okay? If you've got a big vehicle with tires, you know, like that thick, I'm sorry, but you know, you really ought not be parking on a narrow street like that. And if you do, you do it so at your own risk. But when you park up on this, I've got bricks that have been knocked loose right where this guy's tires are right now, as we speak, okay? I'm just taking the loose bricks, put them out back, I'm not messing with them anymore. All right? Don't ask me to, I'm not fixing up the bricks when people are allowed to do that. Big reason why parking is so tight, because the renters outnumber the homeowners. And you've heard me talk about this before, I don't have time tonight, we'll talk, I'll talk more about that later. You know, we need to have a ban on people chopping their properties up into multiple unit rentals. You've heard me talk about that before, at least some of you have. But at any rate, you know, it's an issue. Parking tires up on the sidewalk, up on the curb, and also leaving your vehicle unattended. Now, I was moved to call the governor's office. And this poor young kid answered the phone, I gave him an earful, you know? He won't be the same, but he's, he's opened up a case for it. He's supposed to get back to me, you know, like in three or four days. Because I checked online and it says, the state law on this on this Reddit, and I know there's probably a caveat to it, maybe there's, you know, some, you know, extenuating circumstances, but it says seven days. I heard in the past 30, other people told me, no, you can leave the car parked however long it's tagged and registered, you can leave a park however long you want. I want answers on this, you know? It, it's not right how that goes on. I have another neighbor that has a curb cut, we're not allowed to block it, but apparently she is. And that's another issue. I've heard people say totally illegal, other people say no, it's okay. Well, see, the problem with that is, I try to park on either end of that curb cut so I don't get hemmed in, because a lot of people don't know how to park. Sometimes they don't leave enough room for a piece of paper between your bumper, so that's an easy way out, right? But when they block that, that driveway, they block mine in too. See, it's not wide enough for a car to take. So we have issues with that. I think everybody on council needs to get up to speed on what the codes are. And chief, I'll be happy to talk to you about this afterward, but I've had enough of it. I wanna get some answers from the governor, and we need to step this up. We need to get on the ball with these parking regulations.
Anybody else? Okay, then, moving on. I'm sorry, I looked down too quickly.
Appreciate the time. Carter Hill again. I would just implore the council and just, and the humans in general, to stop trying to use the government to go after your peaceful neighbors. It just seems like there are so many bigger and better things that everybody could be focusing their time. That's all.
Okay.
Me, David Tom, President Homeless, I used to have a house at 725 Congress Street. I'm still paying mortgages on, but I need to comment on this marijuana thing. I've been to four different high schools, one of them twice. And I can say with absolute certainty, at least a dozen kids at the Eupolis High Schools started with marijuana and progressed on to heavier drugs. Some of them now deceased, they damn near killed me. So don't kid yourself, right? It's a psychoactive substance, it changes your mind. It changes what you think and you behave. Now, why my homeless? Because my, my house has been turned into a death trap by way of fire, collapse, explosion, or combination thereof. There's been a massive, and I mean a massive addition, put on the back of a house that's connected to mine. This thing is so big, it has no footer, it has no firewall. It's connected to the house next to it, which sits on railroad ties, so these two houses are actually meshed. They're the same property now, they might have separate services. But structurally speaking, they're the same building. So if one catches on fire, the other one catches vice versa. Now, beans, I put, I was paranoid about the end of the unit for years, I've worked on for decades. And I'm always expecting it to burn down due to electrical problems. Hence, I ripped my ceilings out, stripped my walls, tore some of my floor out, sealed everything with concrete block. Fires sealed everything in the house. And that, I, I was quite confident that would hold it, except this addition has been built as an Osage Avenue style bump up on top of it. Now, you can go on YouTube and watch Osage Avenue burn, 62 buildings in the town, inflamed. This particular block, 700 block, Clive Street, has blown ceiling construction, meaning specifically the rafters run the length of the, the length of the city block and are all open due to the construction. This happened, burning down entire city block out in the Gray Street. It started on the first floor, second floor, third floor, then I got to the ceiling, went down the entire city block and set the whole city block on fire. So I'm not willing to sleep on my floor with my head against my front door, surrounded by smoke detectors and fire extinguishers. It was 60 years old. That house been in my family almost 100 years. I mean, I ain't, I ain't put people through this kind of stuff, you know? How does this happen? I could get into that, but I'm not. As far as, December's made, I made statements about people being, having a problem with the local police department, and I have four names that I've looked through the same things I've been going through through the police department. I've talked to one, if you're nice, about his statement, upon the other three, before I say something. I'm not coming to you with it, I'm gonna state one. Just so you know. Like always, I've been doing it for 30 years now. I'd like to have my house done, maybe somebody can figure out, disarm this multi. It's basically got multi fuses, I don't think anything is inspected or anything. Plus, the building attached to it is old and beat. I'm not willing to live with it, nor can I sell the place in good conscience.
Mr. Carter, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, council, thank you everybody for listening tonight, everybody do appreciate the opportunity and I will try not to take much more of your time. But since this is an infomercial, I suppose, I should add, CBD is good for your dogs and your cats, and you as well. So if you work at the SPCA and you know a cat or a dog who is in pain, you can also call them. And also, I'm a libertarian, so I wouldn't encourage any extra cameras in town, but there has been, chief, a rash of political signs being stolen and vandalized in recent history, so it may be something to consider. So we can catch those bandits. Lastly, you know, I'm glad that my business is safe, because the ordinance doesn't cover CBD, and that's great. There's nothing scary about it. It's safe for kids who have ADD and other things, and adults, and like I said, your cats and dogs. This is so benign, it's not even on any kind of scheduled list or anything. So I'll leave that to the council, if you wanna decide to embrace marijuana businesses, I'll leave that to you. But I've already pointed out kind of the hypocrisy and also the ignorance that can come with that. Because marijuana can really help a lot of people. You don't have to like it, and you don't have to use it. You own yourself. You can decide what you take into your body, because you own you and no one can tell you what to do with that. For decades, this has been a controlled substance, and they've only in recent years decided to offer certain licenses to certain corporations. Can you imagine the lunacy of telling somebody that, "Well, in Delaware, we're gonna give two licenses to two apple farmers," and that's it? Can you imagine how much apples would cost if you left that to two producers? And that's what we kind of have here. The corporations run the cannabis industry. And no one who lives in this town who has a little garden in their backyard is allowed to grow it. So whether you're religious or you're just, you know, you believe in a higher power or not, you believe in, you enjoy nature, or you believe in a higher power, I would argue that you should not try to outlaw plants. This is not where we should spend our time. Thank you again.
Lieutenant Collins, we have a resolution on the agenda tonight about rewarding people that work for us, and that's very commendable. But we need to make sure that the people that do work for us are in a good environment and also that they have a significant backup from, for their jobs. I'm just asking you to, as you go forward and look at your budgeting process, that you look at the people at the city office, for instance. I was made aware of a situation where a businessman came in to ask for a permit and he had to wait 45 minutes, because there was no one, the person that takes care of that was, was out on lunch. And there was no one to, to do that specific job, there was no backup. So I'm just making you aware of those kinds of things that there needs to be, that those people need to be looked at significantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we move on to old business, and ordinance 543. Mr. Day?
At this time, I'm gonna move to table ordinance 543 for two reasons. One, it's currently not in concert with the suggestions from, or I'm sorry, the recommendations from the Planning Commission, but also because I want council to be able to, we've heard some public testimony, council can digest it, do their own research, ask the residents. And I just feel that for something that is important, we should take more time and be deliberate about it.
Joe, can you just, so you're saying Planning Commission wasn't against this ordinance, is that what I'm hearing there?
They weren't against it. They approved it, but suggested changes to the language.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I made that a motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of table in this ordinance? Okay, I just had a question, I'm sorry. I couldn't make comments, because we don't give answers. I just wanted to re- reconfirm, it's, this ordinance was not preventing marijuana product manufacturing facilities or testing, but they were making them permitted uses in industrial zone areas. Am I reading that correctly, or is that, that's on the, page one, it is the fourth where that's?
That's correct.
Okay, so it did not affect, it was allowable in these industrial areas? All right, that's right. Okay, ordinance 544. Is there a motion for a second reading by title? Do we need a motion to read it?
You guys usually do it, I don't know why you usually do it, but, but yes.
Hey, this is a long meeting, we don't need to do anything unnecessarily. So, Mr. Zell, what would you like to say about ordinance 544?
Would you just read the title?
Yes.
Ordinance number 544, and ordinance to amend Article 5, supplementary district regulations 230-28, off-street parking and loading requirements sections 815 in downtown Gateway District. Subsection A, parking requirements for specific use are as follows. Five apartments. There was a change that came in from the Planning Committee that I would like to amend the ordinance with the changes that came in. One of the changes that they're requesting is a change, instead of saying word multiple, changing it to multifamily. And it says dwellings and residential components of mixed-use buildings, which adds two space per unit. And then they add a definition of dwelling multifamily as a building containing three or more attached dwelling units having common walls and/or roof and a separate entry for each unit. This definition includes townhouses and apartments. So I'd like to propose ordinance 5, number 544, with the amended changes from the Planning Commission.
Andrew? Can I just ask Andrew about the definition? Is this consistent with what is in our code already? Like, I know that we have definition already laid out, is this just basically copy paste that out of the max if you?
Yeah.
Yes?
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or discussions from council?
I, I just have one, Max. So, when we add, um, multifamily dwellings and residential components of mixed-use buildings, that's second part, the residential components, there's a section in the code allows you to do shared parking for mixed-use buildings. And it allows you to take just a percentage of the parking that's required. So, but with this, the way that it's written, I look at it and I say, you'll have to use the two per unit, but you'll still be able to do a reduction on the mixed-use, mixed-use parking. Am I right when I say that?
I'm going to ask Chris.
Okay.
Because I have, I have a statement, but I'll let you know if we disagree.
Okay.
Because he said he planned a commission, I did not. I believe that reduction, I'll, I'll give you my view. I believe that. I didn't look at that specifically going into there today, but I believe the reduction is still safe.
Okay.
Just a number. Chris can verify.
While we're waiting for Chris, can I ask Andrew another question? Uh, this was brought up late last year, right? Like some November, maybe? Doesn't matter. I guess that's, I guess I forgot that.
It was in December, but we had to have the planning commission hearing and so on.
Mm-hmm. So, I guess my, um, question here is that my memory, um, you know, is not working right now. Was this, what was the motive behind this? So, we just increased from one point five to two? Is that?
The motive is definitely there's concerns, I think, within the community with all these apartment complexes that are already gone through, that they're using the one point five, uh, parking in the downtown district. And it's interesting, I'm not sure why it was one point five for the downtown district, but if you go back to the original, um, for our area, it said at two. So, I'm just saying we should go back to that two, um, and be removing the, uh, the one point five for the downtown district and revert back to the two, which is for the entire community of the, of, uh, the city of Newcastle.
And this may be Max's question, so I'll point it at you. Would this apply to approved projects already?
No.
Their grandfathered in? Okay. Makes sense.
No. It's a project's approval, it was approved on the law that was done. It would, just sort of clear. The ordinance is effective upon adoption, and so if somebody is in the pipeline to not approve, it would apply then.
Approved at what level?
Yeah, I was just about to.
So, so, I think that it would be appropriate, just in case we got sued, for me to respond to that question and write it into the council.
Okay.
And not here.
Okay. Okay. So, do we perhaps need to table this one too until we clarify that issue?
Uh, that's, that's up to you. I'm just answering the question that was before me, because if an ordinance is effective upon adoption. I think I can speak in general enough terms, but I can get through this, okay? This is hard. So, if you have any ordinance that's effective upon adoption, you have, that ordinance goes into place as soon as you guys raise your hands, okay? If there are projects that are in, that are approved, right, they would have something called a vested right, because they've already gotten to the final stage of the development process, okay? If you have folks that are in the interim phases, okay, whereby they have applied, or they're thinking about applying, or all this kind of thing. Um, you know, they're either in review or what have you. You have, you have a test that's been developed by the Delaware Supreme Court, and if Margot's still here, she'll remember to be talking about this just the other day. It's called the vested rights test, and it's from a case called two forty-four point five acres of land. And there's a balancing test that goes in where you do, where you say, you look at the nature and extent and degree of the developers' reliance upon the law of which they went forward, and the nature and extent and degree of the public interest in the ordinance amendment. And then the court makes a, makes a good faith reliance on existing standards, so it's a balancing test. I could go through, and Erica's here with me. We just went through this all the way to the Supreme Court last year, so we're super familiar with this test, right? So, so if you adopt it, what we would do then for any project that was in, if you drop it effective immediately, we would then, if there was a project that was in the pipeline, we would then have to do what's called a vested rights analysis to determine sort of what that is, right? And, uh, whether or not, you know, we have to do a balancing calculus and predict what the court was going to do. That was a lot of words for a very, very simple question, but it is not a, and Joe, I know you've experienced this, so. And he's experienced me be talking glory about this thing in the past, but, but the only thing you could do, you could, one of the other things you could do is, if you so choose, you could say any project that has applied is exempted from, you know, that will proceed under the ordinance that was beforehand. And then that would basically say any ordinance that was in the pipeline, or any project that was in the pipeline, the new parking requirements don't apply there. So, so that was a long answer to a very short question, which I tried to get out of. Uh, trying to say anything about all that privilege. Margot, I'll state, I'd state the exact same thing that I told the other day. So, to your question, Madam Chair, um, you could, I, we did not do any analysis of projects that were on. You could certainly table that, and this would be what's called a pending ordinance. So, in other words, you could table it for a month, and we could do a quick and dirty analysis of the, of those that are in the pipeline. And I could probably give a better answer to the person Dave's question, because I didn't have a chance to look that up, if that was something you wanted to do.
Well, it sounds like if we don't do that, and we try to apply these rules to the projects that are in the pipelines, we could get sued, right? Is that correct?
Yes. But I will say that, I will say that anybody can sue you for two hundred and fifty dollars and go to the courthouse, so.
Well, yes.
Yeah, there, there is, there is a litigation risk, and we have not, we, Erica and I, have done no analysis of that litigation risk.
Can, can we append the, the ordinance, basically put in a clause that, uh, this would be applied for any new project as of the date that this gets approved?
Yeah. Um, why don't you get, uh, a friendly amendment on my part? This ordinance shall be effective upon adoption, provided, however, that it does not apply to any application that was received before the effective date.
Okay. I did not get all that.
Provided, take the end of your sentence, provided, however.
Okay. Provided, however.
That this ordinance.
This ordinance.
Does not apply.
This ordinance does not apply.
To any application.
To any applications.
Filed with the city prior to the effective date.
Filed to the city.
Filed with the city.
Filed with the city before the applicable date.
Prior to the effective date.
Prior to the effective date.
Maybe I'm missing something, but, um, anyone who has their application in that's not yet been re, uh, reviewed or, or researched by planning, that's not yet coming to planning, why wouldn't it affect that?
This is a legislative determination. I'm saying what I just wrote now was, I was trying to get the tenor of the group. Any application, if you're in, you're exempted, the way I just wrote it.
But, like, to that point, right, that test would have, so for the applications that have been seen yet, basically, new applications, you would have to conduct analysis, vested interest analysis, to see, um, whether they have spent, you know, resources and stuff like that. I, I, I'm just simplifying this.
Can I ask council, can I ask council, and this probably isn't my role, and you know I generally stay quiet unless asked a question. But could I ask you to table this in favor of memo that I would like to put together for you, and then we can consider it and, and pass it to the next meeting? Because there's some things that I would like to add.
I think it makes sense to table it and get it right than to try to rush it through and not get it.
For the public's analysis, if somebody walked in tomorrow, walked in tomorrow, and didn't satisfy these requirements that are in this ordinance, so truly a new application, somebody trying to do that. They have something called the pending ordinance document. What that says is you can't jam an application in just to get that.
I was just about to ask that.
That's pending, right? So, so we would apply the pending ordinance document. If it comes to me, we would apply the pending ordinance document and say, you need to wait until the next meeting until we, till we figure out what this is.
Then, yes, that, that would be, I mean, I'm smiling. Chris, did you have a?
Sorry.
Yeah, Chris.
I'm sorry to talk.
Uh, to answer councilman Dave's question, I, I do believe it would apply to the shared parking, because one of the, the directions of the shared parking section is to apply the parking as if it was a standalone use. So, uh, if it, the language stands.
So, you use a number for the standalone use, and then you do the calculation based on all the uses, and so you still get a reduction for shared parking?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was my understanding as well. Yeah, so we're, we're in full.
If I could add my two cents, I would encourage tabling as well, because we have several projects in different stages of submittals. All in different stages of investments in engineering, so we would want to make a determination or make a recommendation in accordance with Max's guidance on, uh, the court's test of, uh, where in the process, uh, those projects are and how they comply or don't comply with the criteria of the court.
Okay, so we have a motion to table? Is there?
We do not have a motion. We have not had a motion.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table ordinance five four-four.
And to put it on the agenda for the March meeting? Second?
Okay. A second? All in favor?
Aye. Sorry, can, can I just ask, do we need to put a motion with amended language, amended language that we talked about, or?
We'll do that in March. I'm going to get, I'm going to give you guys your out. We'll do that in March, then you guys.
The reason I'm asking is so we can add that language in the meantime, so it's.
That's why we're tabling it, so we get that language right.
Okay, so we can.
So, for councils and the public's benefit, one of the things that we'd like to do, we have some of the planning commission things. Going forward, we're going to try to prepare a ordinance that was originally introduced and then a red line of what the planning commission did, so we can see that, and then you guys can pick which one you're on. You have a little bit of growing pain.
Okay. So, we'll move on to ordinance, uh, new business, a first reading of ordinance four, four, five, four, five. Um, this is Mr. Manoway's ordinance. I'm going to ask him to read it. But before I do, I want to just make the point that, as always, this is a first reading. There will be no discussion. We're simply going to read it into the record, and then we'll move on, and it will be scheduled for public hearing and future discussion and vote.
Ordinance number five four-five, an ordinance to require all city of Newcastle boards and commissions to provide annual reports to the city council on activities of the preceding year. Whereas, the council of the city of Newcastle possesses the authority to adopt, amend, modify, or repeal the city of Newcastle municipal code. And whereas, the city council has determined that the proper administration of the municipal government requires that all boards and commissions of the city of Newcastle provide annual reports to the city council on activities of the preceding year. Now, therefore, it's been ordained by the city coun, council of the city of Newcastle as follows. Section one, chapter one, general provisions of the city code is hereby amended by adding the following context. Article three, general administration, one dash thirty-one through one dash thirty-nine. One dash thirty-one, annual reports to the city. All city boards and commissions in the city of Newcastle shall be required to provide annual reports to the city council on activities of the preceding year. The schedule of such reporting shall be determined by city council. One dash thirty-two through one dash thirty-nine reserved. Section two, if any section, subsequent sentence, clause, or paraphrase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be unconstitutional, invalid, or such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, in the event any existing ordinance or parts of ordinance, ordinances, excuse me, are in conflict here, herewith, the provisions of this ordinance shall control. Section four, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon passage.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a discussion and vote on a potential selection of a city administrator and the contractor. Council had an executive session last night where we discussed in detail the contract that was negotiated with the candidate we selected for this position. As I said earlier, we're not mentioning the name at this time. Is there any further comment or discussion from council? Okay, then I move that we, sorry.
I, I was just going to make the motion.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I make the motion. Sorry. I just want to confirm before we vote that the changes that we have, um, talked about in a special council meeting have been agreed upon verbally.
Yes.
Okay. And no, no additional changes?
And with, and with the candidate, they've been shared, the changes that came out of last night's executive session have been shared with the person we're selecting, and that person has no objection to those changes.
Thank you. Sorry, Joe.
That's all right. I, I'll make the motion. We approve the city administrator's contract as negotiated and approve the candidate as selected.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, do we need a roll call on this? Okay.
It was unanimous.
It's unanimous, um, so. We have a new city administrator, but not for a little while. Okay. Next item on the agenda is.
Suzanne, do you see the light at the end of the tunnel?
Um, next item is discussion, possible motion and vote on, on resolution twenty, twenty-four dash two, approving the subdivision for property known as lots one fifty-two and one fifty-three, the Buttonwood. Mr. Rogers, is this something you're prepared to speak with us about?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a map in our tack. He said he actually made part of the last night's map, so you can do it.
Uh, what you have before you is a, a resolution to, uh, approve a subdivision. Uh, the subdivision was approved by the planning commission at their December meeting. Uh, it creates two lots. Uh, it was approved by the planning commission with conditions. Uh, the applicant has fulfilled those conditions, and the, uh, chair, chair rein has actually signed the subdivision plats. Uh, your subdivision regulations require that subdivisions that, uh, do not, uh, propose public improvements have to be approved by resolution by city council. So, that, that is what your role is here to do.
So, is this one of those situations where this is, we have to approve it, but we really, we can't disapprove it because it's been through the process and used all the conditions?
You have provisions where you could remand it back to the planning commission with specific questions.
Okay.
But generally, your role is ministerial, if I can use a.
That's the word it's meant to be.
You have to approve the veto requirement.
Right. Okay.
Can you just speak to the reasoning of subdivision, just, you know, in the request from, from the owner?
Uh, the applicant had a parcel of land, and he wanted to create two lots to build two, uh, single-family detached dwellings on it. Uh, it was consistent with the zoning. According to the applicant, it was two lots, uh, fifty years ago, but that was immaterial to the planning commission's decision, because it was, it's been one parcel for some time now, since, uh, most importantly, since your subdivision regulations were adopted.
And, and I totally respect the process that happened there. Just curious if there's any public comment. Is there any neighbors that, you know, like?
No. There was no, there was no public comment at the planning commission meeting.
I'll make a motion. We approve the subdivision.
Motion to second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's passed. Okay, the next item is, I guess Mr. Rogers might as well stay up there. There's a council discussion, possible motion and vote on resolution twenty-four, twenty-four dash three, a revised downtown development district boundary expansion.
Madam President, before I get into the expansion request, is, is, is the council familiar with the downtown development district program?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. So, uh, with that, uh, Okay, so with that, the city, of course, has an existing downtown development district. In two thousand, that is approximately eighty-five acres, and we created it eighty-five acres back in two thousand nineteen. The maximum at that time was ninety-five acres. The city explicitly approved it only as eighty-five acres, knowing that they would want to expand it at some point in the future. In two thousand twenty-two, the city wanted to expand the DDD boundary. The city council at the time had us look at three different alternatives of expanding the boundary. They chose the boundary that extended the bound, the DDD district south along seven street. We went to the state cabinet committee on, to the cabinet committee on state planning issues in late two thousand twenty-two and received approval for that expansion. But it was conditioned on a subdivision taking place that would remove a, what they called a split boundary issue. The state does not want the DDD boundary splitting parcels. It was a very unique situation. I don't want to get into the details of it, but more, the cabinet committee's condition was that one of the properties in the proposed boundary expansion area needed to be subdivided. We met Mr. Barthel, the city administrator at the time, and I met with the property owner after that approval, talked to them about the benefits of the DDD and what would be involved in the subdivision, and we kind of left it in private hands after that point. It's been over a year. It came to a head when the property owner explicitly stated that they were not going to subdivide the property. So we were unable to meet the condition of the state planning commission's approval of the initial boundary expansion request. We then revised the boundary to go around the subject property that needed subdividing while still meeting the conditions and the criteria of the DDD boundary. And that's what you have in front of you. We took this revised boundary request again to the cabinet committee on state planning issues in January. It was approved by the cabinet committee with the condition that there be a confirmatory resolution approved by city council of approving the DDD boundary. You are the, you are the final say in this boundary expansion request. So if you have any questions about the specifics of it or the background, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I'll say this in total here, but how many total acres does this add?
Are we at total or in this request?
How much is this request? I know we've already had eighty-five acres.
Yeah.
What does this request add?
Approximately seven point eight acres.
Okay.
And we're allowed to go to one oh five now. The state law changed, or the program, I don't know whether it was the law, but.
So we can still add any acres if we wanted to?
Yes.
Okay, that was where I was going. Thank you.
Other questions?
I guess my, my question is really, because the council already approved the direction of this, is this also, in a way, just a formality, given that this has already been approved by prior council, state has given its blessing to it? So I mean, we're just the current councils, sorry.
The initial resolution said that they had to come back anyway.
Okay.
So it's one of the things that we looked at, and we were trying to figure out if we could go back to the, to the initial resolution. Chris, I'm on memory, my recommended, my memory is that the state plan, they conditioned it also upon having a confirmatory resolution.
The council previously approved my resolution that they could go check out the request.
Right, and it had to come back.
Right. It didn't approve it at all, it just allowed them to go.
Start of the process.
Start the process.
And this is where the proposed apartments are supposed to go as well, right? Is that correct?
The southern terminus of expanded boundary is the proposed battery.
The rectangle shape.
The partial is the site. That's your.
And I guess just curiosity wise, how do we parcel out the, like, the other part? How do, did the other owners of those parcels more nor, closer to the, closer to the South Street, did they have to be in line with, like, they gave the blessing to this?
The answer, the answer is no. It's just an economic, it doesn't require that.
But they're, but they're owners, I was just wondering.
Yeah, but it's an economic benefit to them. So, so whether or not, it doesn't change their use, it doesn't change anything, it's just allowing them to qualify. So it would not be, it's not like a changing zone, where you would, where you would have to do that. It just, it's like a dirty word in Delaware, but an overlay, which basically says, you get the benefits of the DDD if you're in it. So if they, there's no reason to give them notice to say, hey, you're gonna be in the DDD, because if they don't want to exercise it, nothing ever changes for them. There's only goes a change to the, the property as it is, they could just get the benefits. Thank you.
So I was at the May meeting in two thousand twenty-two, when it was first presented. I know there was another gentleman that spoke at that meeting as well about the DDD program. And I saw your report, council at the time asked you to come up with a report for other alternative options.
Yes.
I read that report. This talks about eleven parcels. There were other areas in the historic district and other alternatives that were possible, possibilities. The council at the time moved forward with the application for this segment. Question for Max. Is this a matter of tying a boat, or is this something that, is it yes, no?
Subject to, and I'm gonna lean on Chris, but subject to there not being any condition functionally related to the DDD approval, that we need to expand it, right? Like, I don't know the answer, but this would be a discretionary approval.
Right.
Otherwise, but if it affected our DDD designation, and I don't think it does, like, if we don't approve this, is there gonna be an impact on our DDD designation?
On your, on our existing?
Yes.
No.
Okay. So then it is discretionary.
Right, right. Question. So DDDs that I'm proposing for the parking changes, this now affects this area?
I don't understand.
Don't confuse downtown gateway.
Wouldn't be part of that, okay.
Downtown gateway zoning.
Downtown gateway is a district.
That's a zoning district.
Okay.
Being in or not in the downtown development district has no impact on the zoning.
Okay.
They sound the same, but they're very different.
Yeah. Okay, I guess we have to read it, right? It's a little tedious to read it, but here we go. Whereas, under the downtown development district, districts Acts twenty-two Delaware C, section nineteen zero one, except the act, that the state of Delaware may designate districts within Delaware cities, towns, and unincorporated areas that will qualify for significant development incentives and other state benefits. And whereas each such district is known as a downtown development district, a DDD. And whereas, under the act, the city's population permits a maximum of a hundred and five acres to be eligible for DDD designation. And whereas, the state previously approved the designation of approximately eighty-five acres of land in the city as a DDD, leaving twenty additional acres available to be designated as part of the city's DDD. And whereas, the council desires to take better advantage of the act by requesting and applying for expansion of the boundaries of the city's existing DDD. And whereas, the council approved resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve that authorized the city administrator acting as the city's district administrator for the DDD, the administrator, to file an application on behalf of the city to the cabinet committee on state planning issues to expand the city's DDD so as to include certain properties in the seventh and South Street corridor, and to provide such other documents and information as may be necessary or desirable in connection with such application. And whereas, the city received approval from the state cabinet committee on state planning issues on October second, two thousand twenty-two, to expand the DDD boundary conditioned on a certain property within the proposed expansion area being subdivided to avoid a split parcel issue. And whereas, for reasons beyond the city's control, the property has not been subdivided. And whereas, the city made slight revision in the proposed DDD boundary expansion request to remove the subject parcel that required subdivision with the total acreage to be included in the expansion area equaling approximately seven point eight one acres. And whereas, the properties proposed to be added to the DDD, the expansion properties, per the revised boundary request are the following.
You don't need to read all of this.
Oh, okay, it's a list.
They're as listed.
They're as listed. It's a list of tax parcels ranging in size from point one acres to four point two six acres, so. Whereas, the council believes the expansion of the city's DDD would greatly benefit current and future residents, businesses, nonprofit organizations, and others within the city of Newcastle. And whereas, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve also required a confirmatory resolution to be adopted by the council, expanding the DDD boundaries once approved by the cabinet committee on state planning issues. And whereas, the cabinet committee on state planning issues at its meeting on February first, two thousand twenty-four, approved the revised boundary expansion and boundary correction effective upon the final approval by the council to amend the boundaries. And now therefore be it hereby resolved that the council hereby approves of the boundary expand, DDD boundary expansion to include the expansion properties and shown on map one, district boundary expansion prepared by AECOM and attached here too. The council will adhere to the district plan, the local incentives, and all other responsibilities associated with the district designation within the expanded DDD for the duration of the district. Okay, so we've moved and seconded.
What, do we have a motion?
Motion to.
I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash three?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You abstained, okay.
I have questions and concerns.
Okay, I will say to the, those who voted in favor, before you leave tonight, I need you to sign this resolution, because I have to get the clerk to sign it tomorrow morning, and I have to scan it and send it to the state board, because they have a meeting coming up, and they need this, or we're gonna get dropped. So we, this needs to, to move. Get it out, so I don't forget. Okay, then next item. Okay, council discussion and possible motion and vote on resolution twenty twenty-four dash four, appointing James Michael, known as Mike Smith, to the flood resiliency committee. And you have in your packet a resolution, and Mr. Smith has lived in Newcastle since two thousand twenty. He's a resident of Bandai Village, which is an area that is subject to flood risk. He has a connection to the rest of the city in that his daughter is the pastor of the Presbyterian Church. So, and he was suggested as a, as a person to join, because we had a vacancy, a term expired in December, and that member did not really be reappointed. So Mr. Smith was suggested by a current member of the downtown, of the flood resiliency committee, who also lives in Bandai Village. So that's how we came to nominate Mr. Smith. So I will read the resolution. Resolution to appoint James Michael, known as Mike Smith, to the flood resiliency committee, whereas the city of Newcastle established the sea level rise task force by resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four, and whereas resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two converted that task force to a permanent committee, and whereas resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two also established a staggered schedule of expiration of the terms of the current members of the task force, and whereas vacancy exists on this committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby appoints the following person to the flood resiliency committee, James Michael Mike Smith, flood resiliency committee, term ending February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-seven. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is a discussion, possible motion and vote on resolution twenty twenty-four dash five, a resolution to create the city of Newcastle employee, citizen, and business awards for exemplary service, leadership, and civic engagement. This is also from councilperson Madderway, so I'm gonna ask him to read the resolution, please.
Resolution to create city of Newcastle employee, citizen, and business awards for exemplary service, leadership, and civic engagement. Whereas pursuant to the charter of the city of Newcastle, section eleven A A, the city council shall exercise all municipal powers necessary to proper administration of the municipal government for the well-being of inhabitants of the city of Newcastle. And whereas, the city council recognizes and acknowledges that many employees of the city of Newcastle go above and beyond for their employment duty to provide exemplary service and selfless leadership to the city, which results in the betterment of the city for all residents, visitors, stakeholders. And whereas, the city council recognizes and acknowledges that it has civic-minded and accomplished residents who through their actions, words, and deeds further the legacy and inherited tradition of the city, and who play an intricate part in subcommittees managing community events and initiatives and other contributions to the building of community and our society through their professional and service-minded endeavors that support humanity. And whereas, the city council recognizes and acknowledges that many businesses in the city have taken up the mantle of being engaged corporate citizens and provide quality of life services to the community. And whereas, the city council believes that formal recognition of such exemplary service and leadership, quality of life efforts and civic engagement will further serve the well-being of the inhabitants of the city of Newcastle. Now therefore, be it resolved that there should be created a city of Newcastle employee award, which may be awarded annually, or as appropriate. City council and the mayor may nominate individuals from which up to two, the award recipients may be selected, and such individuals may be formally recognized by city council and the mayor at the next regular city council meeting following the selection of the award recipient. That there shall be created a city of Newcastle citizen unsung hero award, which may be awarded annually or as appropriate. City council and the mayor may each nominate one individual annually from which the award recipients may be selected, and such individuals may be formally recognized by the city council and the mayor at the next regular city council meeting following the selection of the award recipient or recipients. There shall be created a city of Newcastle business difference maker award, which may be awarded annually or as appropriate. City council and the mayor may nominate businesses from which up to two award recipients may be selected, and such businesses shall be formally recognized by the city council and the mayor at the next regular city council meeting following the selection of the award recipient or recipients.
Okay, thank you. Is there a discussion or questions with other members of council?
If I could ask a question. So I see it's the council people and the mayor on nominations, did we think of potentially opening it up to the community to, to do something?
I think that's a good question. My thought was to cast a wide net, and so I think that certainly neighbors and friends can solicit or petition us individually as council or the mayor, and say, hey, Joe Day's a pretty cool guy, this is his story, I would like you to consider him this year as your potential nominee. And then Joe Day, or Andrew Zell, or any of us who are in council, would be the ultimate potential decision maker. And the thought is that if there is a person that you.
And the thought is that if there is a person that you deem appropriate, you could nominate them in a given year, or in a given year, if you think the original said, said person, you could just not participate.
So you, just to clarify, the public would have access to email us or some sort of, you know, at least at a minimum saying, I would like you to consider my neighbor X, Y, and Z for this award? Is that?
I think that's the spirit. I think we are all servants of the people, and I think that's just in line with what we do on a day-to-day basis in our role.
Just a quick question. I love the idea, I think it's great. I like the idea that people can solicit us, but if all six of us voted for someone else, who actually chooses?
Oh, so the thought, so you're talking about the citizen award, right?
Yes, citizen award.
The citizen award is made to say that each person can select a person.
Oh, I got you. So we can each nominate somebody and maybe award it? I didn't understand.
So people aren't fighting over, you know, I like this person, you like that person. If I could tag on to the thought there, the thought is that we have a lot more citizens and residents than we do employees and/or businesses. So that's why I kind of thought, you know, settling that too, but certainly open to discussion. But the spirit of this really just came by just seeing the work that citizens, employees, and businesses do. I feel like what our city has become, or what it will become, is exclusively tied to those three groups, working together and partnering to build community.
So potentially, we could have seven citizen awards, six, one for each council person and one for the mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the, that's as presented, but-
Right, but, but not necessarily.
Yes.
Okay.
So just to throw something on the wall, okay, just to be completely opposite. Would you foresee any accusations of favoritism or in selection, like, oh, you picked this business over that business when all of these businesses are doing X, or two or three are doing Y, but you picked this one, they're favorite? Or the same for people or employees. I can see an employee going, well, why didn't I get selected? I, you know, I just see some, like I said, throwing it on the wall, you probably saw this all hours.
I think, you know, this is obviously not a law per se, right? But it is putting something forward because we could choose people or we cannot choose people, right? You choose any law out there, there are gaps inherently within, within any law. You can find one lawyer that comes down on one side of constitutional law, and a lawyer that comes down on the other side. So we'll never find that out, but what it is doing is saying that all employers recognize their employees in some way. And I think there's a gap in respect to what we're currently doing. We ask a lot of our citizens and residents in respect to subcommittees, et cetera, and we also lean on our business community. So, you know, is it perfect? No, but I'm willing to stand with our citizens, business owners, and employees.
So what form does the award take? Is it just a certificate? Or is, and I know it doesn't say it here, but is there some sort of stipend with it? Or a gift card? Or no money? No money?
Honorary award.
Probably in a resolution.
Okay. Are the, are the employees required to be here for the presentation?
No, I don't think, you know, I don't, I don't think it's like a raffle, you have to be there to win the prize. Certainly, our employees work hard, but-
Ms. Mayor, I thought about saying thing, you know, didn't want to be a Debbie Downer in a sense of, you know, like, one business won the award this year, the other ones didn't, right? Because we're choosing one, maybe two. But then I thought, you know, like, the best of the dollar, right? Doesn't mean that other restaurants are not good, right? It just means that this particular year, this restaurant, because they'll go and get a nice sandwich here too, right? So like, that's kind of how I saw this, you know? So I don't know if this helps everybody in the room or council, but that was kind of, this isn't necessarily, I see almost kind of like, in a particular year, you will know of a resident who has done a little more for our community, or depending whether it's for the city or just something they've gone through, that, you know, we may, you know, nominate it for, same thing for businesses and employees. It doesn't mean that other staff members are not valuable. In my, that's just kind of how I saw it. And I also wanted to say thank you, Brian, for bringing this up. I actually just thought we had an award going on already for, for staff employees, because when we were having people retire, you know, without these resolutions here, we wouldn't have a formal system of saying, thank you for ten years of service, and thank you for fifteen years of service, et cetera. So third thing I want to say is, can we tag along something like that in here under bullet four or five? Will we recognize service of staff employees beyond certain year, right? Year five, year ten, or something like that? Because I do think in today's world, staying in a role for that long is tremendous, not to mention twenty or thirty years. And no compensation in my mind for that either, but, you know, just because we do need to recognize, we should recognize, not, we should recognize those who stay with us for, you know, longevity, yeah, in positions. So just something for all.
Yeah, no, I'm open, I just feel like this is more like table setting and getting us to a place that we need to be. Mayor, as far as, you know, you asking about, you know, how is it formalized? Again, you know, I had thought, thoughts about it, a certificate, maybe some type of trophy or plaque. But again, I want to bring it to leadership and collaborate on what's best for the city and the people.
If I could just talk about the employee side of it. I don't think I know all the employees, so I'm not sure how it'd be fair to pick one over another when I don't have the opportunity, I think, to potentially meet everyone. So should potentially we update that to maybe the administrator should be doing some kind of selection, since they're having the interactions with everyone? And I don't know how that includes MSC to make sure they're as part of all this.
Well, I guess, I don't know, Brian, what was the initial thought there, but I suppose-
They could get a citizen one, an MSC employee, we could always recognize them that way.
I agree that you, we wouldn't know all the employees.
If they live in town, but they don't know them.
But we could ask the administrator, because they work with them, you know, on a daily basis to, you know-
Except we talk to the citizens.
To learn about some, you know, somebody, and they can nominate people too, so I think, you know, but-
Well, the issue with MSC, just to kind of, is they're not a City of Newcastle employee, and most of them don't. Actually, a little in Maryland, which is-
So for, for that award, as written, would not include MSC, nor would include the gentlemen, ladies of Goodwill. Is that right? Is that right?
Right, because Goodwill is-
But again, if they lived in town, they could be a citizen award.
Yes, yes, yeah, I was just, I'm just trying to be clear.
Max, you want to say something?
I was just going to say, you can informally come up with a nomination process, like, it doesn't have to be written in the resolution.
Okay.
Like, you know, you could try it one year, see how it works, and come up with an informal sort of way you nominate.
And there's nothing ever stops us from asking the city administrator to give us three or four names and what they've done for the year.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, and I don't think there's ever a reason not to, not to reward exemplary service, period, whether it's a citizen, a visitor, or an employee.
I just have one concern, and because it's a non-monetary award, I think I know the answer, but we have union employees.
It's fine if it's non-monetary.
Okay, so we don't have to get into the contract issues.
That's why when the mayor said, is there a staple? I said, no.
Okay. Okay, any further comments or discussion?
Do we have a motion?
We need a motion, yes. Somebody make a motion to adopt this resolution?
Motion to amend the resolution. Are you open to amend what I mentioned? Can you repeat?
The service years, years of service to be added to this resolution? Or should we add a separate resolution?
If you want to do that, let's do another resolution.
Okay, so then motion to, to vote a resolution number 2024-5, I guess.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duggan. Okay, and the final item on tonight's agenda is another nomination to a committee to the Board of Adjustment. Mr. Day, would you like to read this one for us?
Absolutely, and I like the preference, by saying I talked to Sue today, she had every intention of being here, but she actually left work early, she's ill, so she did apologize, she couldn't make it.
And she did send some information, which is in your packet.
So Resolution 2024-7, Resolution to appoint Asunta Sue Scarpitti to the Board of Adjustment. Whereas the City Council adopted Ordinance 534 at its March 8th, 2022 council meeting, and whereas the purposes of Ordinance 534 included reconstituting the city's Board of Adjustment as a five-member board composed of the mayor as the chairperson and four city resident members appointed by the City Council. And whereas, there is currently one vacant seat on the Board of Adjustment with its term ending on April 12th, 2027. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council hereby approves and appoints Asunta Sue Scarpitti to fill the vacancy, Asunta Sue Scarpitti Board of Adjustment, term ending April 12th, 2027. And Ms. Scarpitti has been a resident for five years, and she lives in the Seventh and South Street area.
I know Sue, I think she'll do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's proved unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned.